I believe we have a quorum. So I would like to call this meeting of the Richmond Public School Board to order.
Okay, um, read your statement.
Yes, please. You read your, yes.
Electronic. Electronic meeting. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom. The link to access the Zoom meeting can be found in the meeting notice. Once logged in, click interpretation and select Spanish to listen to the interpretation. All meeting participants are encouraged to speak slowly and deliberately to allow for accurate translation. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with the City of Richmond Ordinance 2020-093 and the school board's resolution approved on April 20th, 2020. The notice of the meeting stated that the meeting was a virtual meeting and would be live streamed on the school division's Facebook page. The public could view it there and the link was provided. The notice also stated that the board would not receive public comment. However, public comments could be submitted to the clerk at speakers@rvaschools.net and the comments would be shared with the board and posted to board docs. The agenda for the meeting was also posted to the RPS board doc site and the link was provided. Ready for a whole call? Ms. Paige?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby? Mr. Young?
Ms. Cosby, Ms. Cosby is there, she's just muted.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Ms. Burke?
Yes, here.
Owen?
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam Chair, or now board members are participating.
All right. All right, then the next issue is the adoption of the agenda.
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt or is there any?
Yes.
Okay. I see Ms. Door and Mr. Barlow.
Ms. Owen, I would, a motion to make, to adopt the agenda with one amendment to add a discussion on the school calendar, including all around calendar.
All around calendar.
Around calendar.
Okay, so you move to add a discussion of the school calendar.
After, after action 3.01.
Okay.
No, it's seconded up.
And so that was Mr. Young, all right, but I'm, I'm still trying to write this down. To add discussion of the school calendar, including. Tell me again, including.
Year-round school.
Okay. Year-round school and Mr. Barlow seconded.
Mr. Young seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's what I get for not looking but listening. All right, year-round school, okay. So it has, is there discussion on the amendment request? No, I don't see any discussion on that, so let's have a vote on that, please.
Ms. Door?
Madam Chair, I did have her have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't see it in the chat.
I raised my hand.
Oh, I just look in the chat, okay. Ms. Paige?
So my question would be year-round school. Um, there needs to be a discussion from the board as far as priorities and giving the administration a directive based on our priorities, also budgetary implications. So there are lots of factors to consider in that matter.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Ms. Cosby?
That's okay, I was just gonna say that, yeah, I mean, that's the purpose of having the discussion. Um, but, um, and I'm glad that we are gonna be having it, especially as we are looking at, uh, as we're looking at options and, you know, this is something that we've talked about for a bit off and on. So I'm, I'm really happy that it's being added to the agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, then let's move to the vote on the amendment. And there's, there's another one that wants to be, add an amendment, so this won't, then go to that before we do the whole agenda.
So you want to vote on this one and then take another?
Yeah.
Ms. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Paige?
So for clarity, we are voting on
the amendment.
The agenda for year-round.
The, the, to add, to add the discussion of year-round schools.
Yes.
The agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke? Mrs. Burke?
I don't see her.
Okay.
She may have got.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes eight oh.
All right, then, Mr. Barlow?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I did not write that, so I'm not sure where it came from.
Okay, then, that's too funny. All right, then in that case, if there are no more, we will go and vote to approve the agenda.
It was me.
Okey-dokey.
I, I had to use Scott's login.
That's okay, that's all right, it doesn't matter, we're just gonna go for it. Okay. Ms. Wilson, let's have the vote on the agenda as amended.
Uh, you need a motion, please?
Seconded.
I'm sorry, I didn't, who, was that you, Mr. Barlow?
It was.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one minute, before we vote, Mr. Stanley. Ms. Burke has been kicked off and is, can't seem to get in. So she'll be with us in a minute, hopefully. Okay, let's go ahead.
So this vote is to approve the agenda as amended, Mrs. Paige?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Uh, has Ms. Burke joined us again yet? Ms. Owen?
Yes, no, she has not.
All right, motion passes eight zero.
All right. Before we move to public comment, I have a statement. And first of all, I would like to say that we all appreciate all those who took the time to send public comment and email or call us about reopening options. We received 124 pages of transcribed comments, so we are not going to read all of those tonight. We will read each for one minute and stop after two hours, at which point I will read a list of those people who gave a preferred option by preference. We will only read comments with names given and only those about reopening. The people who only gave their preferred option will not be read during the comment time because their names and actions will be listed at the end. And the reason for truncating our public comments this evening is the need to move expeditiously to a decision about reopening our schools this fall. I know that you all want to know that decision, hopefully before midnight. Please feel free to email me or about your feelings about this decision tonight and going forward. Remember, all the public comment is posted on board docs where we read them and you can read them too. And again, thank you so much for taking the time. Some of you have been so passionate and have shared really personal experiences. And know that that is not, not the, anything that we want not to include in our thought processes. So thank you. Okay, so, Ms. Wilson?
Okay. Latonya Smiling Freeman. Richmond city schools are predominantly, are predominantly African-American and overcrowded. How will social distancing take place with our children using the bus in class and in special education? Will protection equipment be provided? And what protocols will be in place to assure teachers and staff doesn't have COVID-19? Sharon Gilbert Palmer. I am a proud RPS employee. I propose virtual school for the fall with the possibility of returning to the buildings in the spring depending on the COVID-19 numbers. Lives are more important at this moment and children have to be educated regardless of COVID-19. I know this option will be challenging for some single parent households. Whereas that parent has to work, but it's still enough time for those parents to figure out how to make some arrangements and have RPS assist those households. Let's think about not only the well-being and health of our RPS students, but also the well-being and health of our RPS teachers, staff, and administrators. Should one of us get sick, we put all of us at risk. Some of us have underlying health issues and really are not comfortable about being in the building environment and possibly. Mary Thorne. As a teacher for RPS, I am anxious to get back to the classroom. I feel whatever plan gives the parents the peace of mind that they need is the appropriate one. I do not believe that being in the classroom is crucial to a child's development. I am in support of a plan, any plan to be decided upon. Catherine Schink. Option E is the only option. I am a competent teacher who can teach as effectively online. No in-person instruction is worth risking sickness and death. Option E is the only option. Artie Marshall. Will masks be provided for staff as well as students returning in the fall? Will temperatures be taken as well to see if anyone may be sick? Jasmine Sheffield. I am an RPS teacher who recently gave birth at the beginning of the severity of COVID-19. My infant son recently turned four months and is in one of the high-risk categories and so am I. Just one month ago, he underwent surgery and I have, um, a condition, making my husband the only person in the household that does not have a predisposition to this hard virus. I am terrified to return to work for these obvious reasons and I am torn because I understand the importance of providing our inner-city students with structure and education. However, I do not want to put myself and my children in the position to catch the virus. Please understand that teachers are doubly suffering as both teachers and parents and I do not believe that we should rush to return to school to soothe others around us. Thank you for listening. Amanda Gibson. Thank you for the careful deliberations on school reopening. Thank you for allowing public comments. Thank you for letting the science guide your decision and for respecting the safety of everyone involved. My comments are based on our experience so far with the RPS virtual summer camp. I have been very impressed with the administration. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to what she says, okay. Virtual school would never work for her, um, child if she doesn't get the services and socialization of in-person preschool. I don't have a lot of confidence in her readiness for kindergarten next year. So I like the hybrid approach. Our family might choose different options for each child based on their age and needs. One other thought is I would feel more confident in sending my kids for in-person school if I knew there was a seamless virtual option that we or everyone could switch to if in-person school wasn't working. Tracy Knox. Is a parent of a rising second grader at John B. Carey. She's a working parent that has been fortunate to be working from home since March, but my future with, with telework is un. Too normal and have some more, have structure for my daughter and for two aspects of part A and D. Um, I don't think my daughter will do well fully virtually, nor do I feel that between the family obligations and work schedule for both her father and I, that we will be able to accommodate a fully virtual option. I'd like to know what a day of full virtual lesson would look like, how would lessons be delivered? We didn't hear anything at all from her teacher once school closed, so I'm not very confident in that option. With that being said, I'm open to the hybrid option. She also is. She doesn't know what option would work for her child. Kayla Carruthers. Is an RPS elementary teacher urging the school board and RPS leadership to begin the upcoming school year virtually either through Plan D or E. Unlike in March, teachers, leadership, and support staff will be able to make distance learning more engaging, collaborative, and accessible for the kids and families we serve if the school board votes on a plan soon and to eliminate the role and presence of SSOs and SROs in our schools. Cindy Griffin says virtual schooling was just a bit too much for her son and to keep up with, with his needs and direct contact with teachers. Kami Harper. Is a teacher and after reviewing the plan options, I think Plan B would be best with five days of in-person instruction for our young children and children with significant, significant needs. This would be best for this population of students who require the routine and small group attention of in-person instruction. I believe that the third grade students and older could be successful with a hybrid or fully virtual option. Thank you for considering my option in your, my opinion in your deliberations. Stephanie Cumberbatch. What about the students who want to attend school and don't want to do virtual school? Cody Nystrom. Thank you for running a transparent, collaborative, and thorough process. I would like to come out strongly in favor of Plan B and with secondary support for Plan C. I have a rising first grader at Fox Elementary and a three-year-old at JCC. Given the low transmission rates as well as illness rate for children, it seems that the downside from keeping all these kids at home significantly outweighs the upside from a public health perspective. Given that all personnel and students would have the choice in all options to participate fully online, I do not think the argument of fairness for a minority of immunocompromised or elderly individuals holds water. These families have the choice and duty to protect themselves through virtual options. I imagine they are already enforcing strict social distancing in their summer lives and it would make sense for them to continue to do that in the fall. They will likely also be the first to access vaccines, so this is a fair and balanced approach. Jessica Rucker. As a parent of two special needs children who tend to get sick longer with cold, when colds pass around, I think it would be best to consider fully virtual for the first semester. For those with IEPs, I think a part-time schedule would suffice. My issue is there are those that are asymptomatic adults that no one knows about and these same people could possibly be stabbed. If possible, I would like to fully educate my kids virtually for the 2021 school year. I have my master's in education, so I know a little something on education. I just thought I'd submit my feedback. Rebecca Bates. Firstly, Mr. Cameras, I applaud the new plans for reopening introduced in the July 10th, RPS Direct, specifically the all-virtual first semester plan. I am a parent, government employee, and Southside community member. I live, work, and shop in Richmond. While true that the risk to our children may be slightly lower than to adults, it is still a risk. My son is a rising sixth grader who will be attending Franklin when we return to school. I want nothing more than to get him out of the house and back in school. He is bored, angsty, and misses his friends. But at the same time, he is as scared and uncertain about this new virus as most of the adults I have met. Opening schools would be a flagrant and egregious dereliction of duty to our children unless we can follow the originally recommended six feet of distance in properly ventilated rooms while all students and staff wear masks, which, as we all know, in our already overcrowded and often neglected public school buildings is impossible. Keisha Tyson. I have three small children ranging from age five to three. They are very early learners, so I feel they will need some time in the classroom to interact and get one-on-one help with their teachers. I can agree if they're allowed inside the classroom at least twice, possibly three days would work for us. Tysha Booker. I really want to have my child back in the classroom. As a single mom that's in school myself, it's really challenging to teach my child at home. I have confidence in RPS keeping everyone safe. Um, Sherry Canaster. Submitted a link to the article about the Arizona teacher sharing a classroom. L. Page Scalow. Um, I would like to see a fully in-person option for elementary-age children. Our homeschool is JB Fisher and we want to attend K this fall. Michelle Walton. My family would like to select Option C. We truly feel this should be parents' choice to elect to send their children, their child or children back to school in person. And I hope that is an, an option. If parents aren't comfortable, then there could also be an option for remote learning. I believe there should be enough resources to offer both options, but would prefer in-person, full-time learning. We are a two-house income and we are not able to stay home and work. Our jobs require us to be outside of the house and this significantly impacts our lives if our children cannot attend in-person school. Thank you. Ayesha Smith. As an instructional assistant at a preschool, I have concerns about its reopening in the fall. Even though I completely understand the importance of early learning, I don't feel like kids this age can continuously adhere to what will be required safety measures. These students don't even like to keep a hat on or wash their hands after using bathroom for some of them. So to require them to wear a mask all day and constantly wash their hands could be difficult. I have an at-risk child at home and another child who needs me to be at home if she learns virtually. I have four kids in school and are not comfortable with them at school in the fall. I feel spring will be more realistic for safety reasons. Even though our numbers are declining, other states are not, and no one can honestly say that hours won't change soon. If you must send preschoolers to school, please consider maybe only two to three times a week. Gregory Music. I have thought a lot about school opening and have gone from support of partial opening to full opening and back to all virtual. Part of this is because information seems to change daily. I am also hearing many concerns from staff. Most of my teachers plan to return no matter what the school board decides. However, some do not feel they can return to work if children are going to be in school. These are staff members with secondary health issues who are older. Some have told me they would retire. Some can't retire but would take leave. There is a great deal of fear and stress. I have direct experience with COVID. I likely got it during the school computer distribution, as did at least one teacher. We all wore masks, gloves, and were socially distanced. I was lucky and my only symptom was a mild cough for a couple of days. The teacher was sick for a week but never hospitalized, however. Lenita Buck. Fully back to school for elementary school students. Everybody goes back to school if they want. Last names A through M, Monday and Wednesday. N through Z, Tuesday and Thursday. Virtual Friday. Two days a week in person, three days virtual for middle and high school. Tracy Saunders also provided a link to the article about the Arizona teachers. Lauren Early. As a parent of two RPS elementary school students and two more future students, I'm writing to express my strong support for reopening Plans B and C. I was grateful to watch the excellent data-filled presentations by esteemed regional doctors and scientists during the July 9th, RPS school board meeting and accordingly believe the data supports these two plans fully. I exhort you to follow this data and make a courageous decision to do the hard but best work of making in-person school an option for elementary school students, at least if not for, for all RPS students come fall. The certain losses to all RPS students in not offering a fully in-person option and especially to younger students and those most vulnerable, I need, are in my option much greater than the potential and very small risk of a voluntary in-person option for students and teachers that wish it. Morgan, Morgan Colton. I would like to thank Jason Cameras and his team for making this decision as carefully as possible. The response by Mr. Cameras and his team have been amazing in the past four months. However, as I've sat and pondered what reopening could look like, my brain fills with anxiety. As a teacher at RPS, the only real ethical decision is to plan for 100% virtual instruction for the first semester. There is no amount of in-person instruction that is worth multiple human lives. Students will be okay and will come back stronger when it is safe for all. From a logistical standpoint, allowing parents to choose between in-person and virtual instruction will stretch our teachers too thin. We need to be thinking logistics in addition to safety. I feel that it is best for all students and teachers to be using similar, if not the same platforms. Sonia Sorrell. I think Plan B would be best for parents, students, and staff. Parents who want virtual learning for the school year can choose this option and those who want in-person learning can choose this option. The same for teachers. Some teachers want to go to school and some do not and can do the virtual teaching. Whatever people choose should remain throughout the school year, so there is no confusion. Too many options and changes will only negatively affect everyone because there will be chaos trying to figure it all out over and over again. Keep the class sizes in small, in school small, so those students will get great instruction tailored to their needs and classroom management and disruptions will not be a problem. There is no one-size-fits-all plan, but if everyone can choose either virtual or in-person, then no one can complain about the choice they made. Latonya Kelly. As a RPS teacher and parent, I am in favor of Option E, opening virtually for the first semester. I watched last week's school board meeting and while the risk seems lower for children under the age of 12, I am not comfortable sending my son to school and going back into my high school classroom with students over the age of 14, knowing there is a higher risk. As a parent of a rising first grade student at John B. Carey, I am worried about the quality of the virtual instruction that he will receive, but I know that he is doing well with the RPS Summer Camp at Home program. I hope that if RPS decides to go virtual for elementary students, the live class sessions with their teachers will continue and not pre-recorded lessons. Please consider teachers with their own children when deciding on a plan. If the district goes with the hybrid plan, who will keep my son and make sure he logs into his lessons and is attentive? James Austin, how can you ensure protection from COVID-19 for special-needs teacher working with low-incidence students in wheelchairs and ventilators which require hand-over-hand assistance? We as staff feel unsafe, and on top of this, there's an IEP in place to be supported. Dr. Camus states that no teacher will be forced into work in person, so how will virtual work for low-incidence students? What is your plan for safety for both teachers and students? Margaret Cook, I strongly support any of the reopening options that allows for in-person learning for the youngest students and the most vulnerable, children with IEPs, disabilities, ELLs, et cetera. I am strongly opposed to options D and E, especially E. For many RPS families, virtual learning means no education, and I find this unacceptable. I have raised this point many times and have yet to receive an answer. How can working families or single-parent families or families who have multiple young children to care for basically any family without a dedicated stay-at-home parent facilitate young children's online learning when they are at work? How can they afford to pay for additional daycare when many families are barely making ends meet? My own daughter is unable to engage in any meaningful way over a computer. My husband and I are also both essential workers who do not have the luxury... Mary Withrow, thank you all for your hard work thinking through reopening options for RPS. Our family likes Plans A, B, and C. We have three elementary school children and hope to send all of them in person, though we don't think any of them would be considered high need. Plan C seems especially reasonable considering the data on elementary students being less risk to either transmit or contract COVID. Thanks for your consideration. Beth Knox, as a parent and a teacher, I feel that Plan E is the best option right now until we have a better grasp on this whole pandemic. While I realize that this option may continue to put a strain on families where parents and caregivers must either continue to work or return to work, I feel that this is still the most responsible option. Lauren Withrow, I'm a parent of a second grader at George Mason, and I prefer Plan B. I plan to send my son to any in-person option that you end up voting for. I know this is a very difficult decision, and we will do our best with virtual school if that's what you end up deciding is best. Thank you for taking the time to go through so many scenarios in such an unprecedented time. Brandon Trake, I'm a middle school science teacher in RPS. Cutting the school year short was clearly a difficult decision. At the time, it was not 100% clear what the dangers were or would become, but it was the correct decision to make. At that time, we were assuming that the picture would become more clear over the summer, but I'm not sure that it has. I miss my students, and I miss teaching. It will be difficult to start the next school year mostly virtual, but I feel that, once again, we should opt to keep the majority of students at home. I support a fully virtual learning experience for the majority of students for the first quarter or first semester. I think this decision would be, could be reevaluated periodically, and I feel it is best to err on the side of caution when lives are at stake. I also think we should allow certain students to come to the building, including students with special needs, students whose parents are frontline workers. Philip Kennedy, I have 100% faith in the board and the superintendent on whatever decision is made. My eagerness to provide our students with the best possible advantage in life does not hinge on any one decision. However, I would prefer to err on the side of caution and opt for only a fully virtual option for the first semester. Cynthia Mankus, I am a veteran teacher and have been teaching in RPS for more than 30 years. I am able to retire with time but not with age. Regardless, I love teaching and can't imagine retiring anytime soon as long as I can teach in safety with health. I have some concerns that I share on the Support RPS Schools Facebook page. I am not usually one to share my opinions publicly, but I have some growing concerns. Here are my thoughts, comments, questions for the board. So normally, I keep my opinion to myself or share it with only a few that are within my circle, but I am troubled by some of the things I heard during the school board meeting. Medical specialists were at the virtual table sharing their thoughts about social distance, and a very low percentage of very young children contracting the virus or passing on the virus. Most concerning to me is where all of a sudden, six feet of distance has turned into three feet of distance. Patricia Tate, I support Option E, a fully virtual reopening. For the reopening of schools, for the safety of our students, staff, and families, please vote Option E to reopen schools. Shayla Riggs, as a first-year teacher coming into RPS, I would like to submit my comment on the upcoming school reopening discussion. I fully support Option E or a fully virtual reopening. While this is not the option that may be the most beneficial to students academically, it is absolutely not safe for students and teachers to risk their lives during an ongoing pandemic for the sake of returning to normal. Thank you. Karen Colby, for the safety of our students, staff, and families, please vote for Option E to reopen schools. Katrina Momarosa, I think the only option for school reopening is Option E, fully virtual. This is the only option that would keep students and staff safe. It would be detrimental to our students to have to return to mass distancing, nonstop disinfecting, and the potential to be in and out of school as people are infected. Our students would be traumatized. To be unable to eat together, be near each other, play on the playground, and socialize normally would be devastating. The mental health toll on students and staff, as well as the cost involved, is not worth it. Please vote Option E, fully virtual. Thank you. Mary Toons, for the safety of our staff, teachers, and students and families, I support Option E for a fully virtual reopening of our school system this fall. Thank you. Caitlin Saddleloss, excuse me. For the safety of our students, staff, and families, please vote Option E to reopen schools. T. Kaye Woodson, I have a few questions that I hope will be addressed during the next school board meeting. How will the implementation of phonics be addressed for kindergarten? How will individual testing be conducted in schools versus virtual classrooms? Samantha John and Phil Ripke both say please vote Option E to reopen schools for the safety of students, staff, and families. Marina Blau, as an alumni of RPS and a friend to many teachers and students, I want to make it clear before the school board that I support Option E, a fully virtual reopening to protect the safety of faculty, students, and staff. Allison Verden, I am writing as a teacher in RPS to make sure that I voice my opinion on reopening plans for the fall school year. I am in strong favor of Option E, virtual option for the first nine weeks. I believe there are too many risks associated for staff and students if we were to reopen in person. COVID-19 cases are continuing to increase, and I believe this will keep growing in the fall semester. Thank you for hearing my opinion, and I hope you take my opinion into consideration. Anna Mason, as a parent of Richmond Public Schools, I am concerned there is no plan for the upcoming school year, yet there is a discussion for voting on the topic. As you may be aware, the COVID-19 rate of infection across the country is trending upwards. The number of infected individuals have surpassed our rate when we originally closed brick-and-mortar schools in March. Many times in RPS, we have poorly planned implementations, but this time, lives will quite literally be at risk. We cannot afford something to be poorly planned, and it is the responsibility of Jason Camus to supply us with the answers to major questions. We need our school board to ensure administration has a plan for RPS well before schools open. If you decide to make a decision without information of how our community is affected, you show your lack of concern for the lives within the district you should be representing, which won't be forgotten. Evelyn Lichtman, as a teacher and parent, I hope that you will consider my desire for Plan E. I have asthma that has worsened when I get sick. A common cold can cause me to have difficulty breathing, and many times, I end up on a course of steroids. My oldest daughter also has severe asthma. I am very concerned about the opening of school. I am confident that RPS can conduct engaging learning activities via a virtual platform. Thank you. I think Dr. Harris is going to take over.
Yes. Nina Ford, you're welcome. Nina Ford, I'm a RPS teacher, and I strongly favor Plan E. All of the other options would unduly place students and teachers in harm's way. Using financial resources, regardless of their source, for things like forehead thermometers or temporary hand-washing stations and an attempt to make an unsafe situation slightly less unsafe is not wise and would only provide a false sense of security. To select any plan other than E would be to gamble with human life. This is one of the most important decisions the board will ever make. None of us want to be facing these circumstances, but that does not change the fact that we are. I love my students and want desperately to teach them in my classroom again, but not until it's safe to do so. We must err on the side of caution. Vote for Plan E. Chameka Mace, I don't believe it is safe for students or staff members to go back into a school setting. Virtual school is more safe for everyone. We have to protect everyone as best as possible. The COVID-19 numbers continue to spike. There is no way everyone can stay safe in school. Please do not reopen schools. Katila Cashin, I hope my message finds you well. For the safety of students, staff, and families, please vote Option E to reopen schools online. This option will help contain COVID-19 from outbreaks to vulnerable populations such as unimmune compromised students and their respective family members. In the age of information and technology, I believe with the support for Option E, RPS will display their resiliency toward the national and global effects of this pandemic. Kate Wright supports Option E, fully virtual opening in September. Marissa Manchi, Mr. Barlow, I'm writing as a parent of a student at WFES to urge you to please vote for Option E, fully virtual reopening for the safety of students, educators, staff, and families. Just over this weekend alone, stories emerged of 80-plus children and staff infected at a summer camp program. One out of three teachers who shared a classroom through the summer dying, and South Carolina's first cases of COVID-19-related MISC in local children. Our children's lives are too valuable to risk. Our educators and administrators give more than they should have to already. We shouldn't be asking them to risk their lives too. Please show your support for kids and their neighbors and community members. We gratefully entrust with their education by prioritizing their real safety. Anything less than Option E is banking on their... Megan Byrd, I support virtual schooling. It is unsafe for kids to attend school for the 2020-21 school year. Please do not reopen. Candice Nunnally, for the safety of students, staff, and families, vote for Option E to reopen schools. Pamela Carter, for the safety of students, please vote for Option E. Crystal Drake is also voting for Option E. I feel that it is not safe for our students' staff to go back in person. Ariana Tricky, my name is Ariana Tricky. I am a Richmond City resident and teacher for RPS. I urge you to support Option E, a virtual reopening for the first nine weeks. Option E is the only truly safe option and will allow RPS time to purchase the necessary supplies and make upgrades to school buildings that were mentioned during last week's school board meeting. I hesitate to think we will be ready in time for a September opening, knowing that we will be competing with every school district across the country for these vital supplies. Additionally, by delaying our in-person opening, we will have time to focus on crafting the best virtual learning experience for our students and families. #onlywhenitsafe. Quinn Rentsch, I am a Richmond City resident, and my partner is an RPS teacher. The only option on the table that is truly safe for RPS staff and students is Option E. With this choice, it will give RPS enough time to put together a robust virtual learning plan while we learn from the triumphs and mistakes of other districts across the country. If RPS were to open in person in September, the biggest question I have is when, not if, staff and students catch COVID-19. Who will be footing the hospital bill? The funeral costs, no matter how small the percentage is, any form of an in-person opening is RPS cosigning the Grim Reaper's List. Thank you. Megan Reimer, I am a history/social studies teacher for Richmond Public Schools. I am also a REA, BEA, and NEA member of the Member and member of the Virginia Educators United. I and so many other teachers miss our schools and our students. We want to be back in the classroom, back with our kids, but it is not safe. I have listened to the medical professionals at last week's board meeting. I have listened to other medical professionals around the country. I have read the research studies. I have come to my own conclusion. It is simply not safe for students and staff to return to school. There are too many risks, too many what-ifs, too many questions. It scares me to death knowing that I could potentially pass COVID-19 to any of my coworkers, students, or their families. It is not even myself that I am most worried about. It is the teacher across the hall with cancer, the two teachers with newborns. Tracy and Wayne Mo, we choose Option E. This is the only choice that seems safe for students and staff. Once the school board feels it's safe enough to hold meetings in person with the community members also present, we can consider sending students and teachers back into buildings. Rashida Thompson, for the safety of our students, staff, and family, I support a fully virtual reopening. Lee Rinznick, I am a fifth-grade teacher at Oak Grove Belmead Elementary School, and I am an 18-year veteran of Richmond Public Schools. I support Option E, a fully virtual reopening for the safety of our students, staff, and families. Judy, excuse me, Janet Lundie, I am a Richmond resident. I am writing to encourage the school board to support Option E for virtual reopening. The potential for spreading coronavirus in crowded school environments is still too high right now. It's not worth putting the lives of children, teachers, and support staff at risk. Dana Bowser, I vote for Option E, all virtual. I think this is the safest option until all guidelines are able to be followed to allow for the safety of the students and teachers. And then she provided a link for more information. Alyssa Freeman, dear Chairwoman Owen, I am an early intervention reading instructor in Richmond Public Schools. I do small group instruction with up to seven students at a time in a very small area in my school, as we don't have enough classroom space. My space is big enough for a small kidney-shaped table that fits me and seven students, and that's about it. It's hard to get in and out of the space and impossible to social distance in. She shares her diagnosis that she has and shares that without her medication, she would be in a lot of pain. I would be unable to work and would eventually need a transplant. If I were to return to teaching and cough the... If I were to return to teaching and caught the coronavirus, I would probably die. While the vast majority of my students wouldn't get sick, they mostly certainly would be carriers. They could spread COVID to me, to other teachers and staff members, to each other, and then take it home to their families. Gus Caldwell, to support the health and safety of Richmond students, their families, and myself and all other staff, I support Option E. Kelly Garraw, I will have two elementary students in District Four in RPS next year. I support, I support Plan E because I support teachers. They know the best about what to expect from students in the administration and the teachers I know in the REA want fully virtual through the calendar year. The medical presentation last week was very informative, but I don't like that we are working with a goal of kids in schools in September and making the data work for that. When in reality, COVID-19 rates are surging. If communities around us won't take the threat of COVID-19 seriously and do what needs to be done to truly fight the pandemic, we should not force the RPS workforce and students to just deal with it. Even during a good year, RPS relies on volunteers to help get schools ready. Who will prepare the schools to open? Have PPEs and extra supplies been ordered? What could even be available or operational in September? Pia Spinner, as a, as the parent of children at both MLK Middle School and Armstrong High School, I fully support Option E for virtual reopening for our schools for the safety of students, staff, and families and the community at large. Alexandria Ginsburg, I support a fully virtual reopening to support the health and safety of our students, staff, and communities. No other way. Diane Dwyer, I live in the Fifth District and near Lombardi and Broad. I support Option E, a fully virtual reopening. My sibling, who I see frequently and who I provide mutual support for, works at Huguenot. I am deeply concerned for their safety and the safety of the students and families they serve. I am also concerned for my neighbors who live in the Fifth District. A fully virtual reopening is the only way to ensure that all RPS students and families are safe amidst the deadly global pandemic. No one should have to die because of premature in-person schooling. Thank you. RTV Bandom, as a teacher at Thomas Jefferson, I urge you to vote for Option E to open schools virtually for the safety of our students, staff, and families. Taysha Sparrick, I am a RPS teacher, parent, and homeowner, homeowner in District Four. Please vote to reopen for Option E to reopen schools. Emma Muniz, I am writing to you as a teacher in RPS High School. I urge you to vote for Plan E on July fourteenth for the safety of our students and staff. As a staff member in a school of over a thousand students, I know that many of the precautions doctors and experts are calling for are not feasible or probable. We often do not have soap, toilet paper, and paper towels in the bathroom. Our classrooms and hallways are not often cleaned on a basic level. So I'm very concerned that the responsibility will be heavily on teachers to maintain sanitary hygiene in our classrooms with our own supplies. We buy out of pocket, which are already so difficult to find. I have been frustrated and deeply saddened by much of the rhetoric about reopening and the lack of attention to the impact and devastation it will undoubtedly have on the adult staff in the schools. If it is low-risk transmission to, from young kids, that's great, but that does not account for the great risks for your teachers and staff. It also does not factor in older kids. Allison Garrett, please vote for Option E. Robert and Chantel Brown, my husband and I believe that the school year should open virtually. Before the winter break, we asked that RPS leaders and parents reevaluate the COVID-19 status and make a decision for the spring semester. Although data has shown that the virus has not been as severe in kids, we have to be concerned about our teachers and staff as well. What happens if the teachers and staff are affected by COVID-19? Does the system have enough trained professionals to pick up and take over a school with multiple teachers out? We believe that the focus should be on getting all of our teachers trained to provide a structured virtual curriculum over a six-to-seven-hour day with a few breaks in between. Latrina, good morning. I would not be sending my child back. I want her to do it from home. Lauren Weaver, I am writing to tell the school board that it is very irresponsible to open schools for in-person learning for the 2020-21 school year. Putting teachers' lives and their families' lives at risk for convenience is not only irresponsible, it is downright selfish. You don't know if a teacher has a husband, wife, or other family member at home who is compromised, or maybe a teacher themselves who is compromised. Are you going to test teachers every two days? Do you realize if school goes back in person that teachers may not be able to see their elderly parents and will essentially have to act like they are in quarantine when they go home for the day? And so will whoever lives with them at home. Everyone wants to get back to normal, but until this virus is contained, it would be in everyone's best interest for learning to be virtual. That is the new normal until we get over this. Let's not forget, we haven't completed the first wave of this virus. Thank you for coming to my TED Talk. Please be smart. Claire LaFieu, Mr. Barlow, my name is Claire LaFieu and I am a resident of the city of Richmond and love this city as I'm sure you do, do too. More importantly, I am a mentor at Carver Elementary School and have been for four years. I would love to get back to this, into the school to work with my mentee again, but I know that even them in a school at all puts their health and community's health at risk. I hope that you will support a fully virtual classroom for the safety of our students, staff, families. Please vote for Option E to reopen schools. Courtney Pennergrass, the only way it is safe to return to school in the fall is through Option E, fully virtual. We need to adopt this plan and allocate the budget to address the equity needs of families, students, and staff. I do not make this recommendation lightly. There are too many questions and not enough money to answer them. Unfortunately, this pandemic has exacerbated pre-existing issues of equity within our schools. We need to use this as an opportunity to connect back with our communities, divest our money from private interests, padding the pockets of a select few, mostly Richmond transplant employees and privatized curriculum, and invest in the teachers and community members that will continue to keep school, the school system afloat long after all of us find other jobs. We are here to serve the people. Let's start this year. Select Plan E, allocate the budget to address equity issues that will arise, and invest in our teachers and communities. Heather Johnson, I support the Plan E for virtual learning for the first nine weeks of school because there are just too many health risks associated with returning to in-person learning at this time. I am genuinely concerned for the health and well-being of my students and their families, as well as my own and my families. We are teachers, educators, and mentors. We are not healthcare professionals. Additionally, the responsibility of enforcing mask-wearing by all students and staff all day long will be quite a challenge, especially given that there are, given that the air in our building rarely works properly as it is and breathing, even in normal times, is often difficult. This is a change from my, this is a change from my original opinion. I have had to stop thinking of myself and how much I miss my job, my students, and the families and begin to think of what is actually best for everyone's health and safety. I believe that we should look at the opening up of schools and quarters. That way. Melvin Hostman, I am, as a teacher in RPS, I am extremely concerned with the effects an in-person reopening might have. While I am eager to see my returning students and to meet my new ones, I struggle with the possibility that seeing them might have negative health impacts on them, myself, my colleagues, our families, or the community at large. For this reason, I urge the board to vote for Option E. Shelley Holmes, as a parent and teacher, I have a few feelings about reopening schools. As a parent, my son is a special needs child who needs the in-class instruction, but with this pandemic and guidelines from the CDC, it wouldn't be ideal for him to go back to school. He has a hard time distancing himself from children that he knows or for anyone that matters. During the school closure, his speech therapist and teacher did Zoom meetings with him and he did a great job and was engaging with them three times a week. As a teacher, I don't feel safe going back to school right now. When I leave school, I have a family of my own and knowing that I will be around almost forty kids a day, we are departmentalized, worries me way too much because since it has been reported that not everyone has symptoms and still carries the virus. That is the biggest scare for me because I also check on my father who has health issues and if I don't want to infect him with it because I contracted it. Emily Wilson, for the safety of our students, staff, and families, please vote Option E. Trendy numbers suggest the second wave is almost here. Schools are not equipped to follow guidelines to limit transmission of COVID-19. Martha Wingfield, I am a middle school science teacher in RPS and I am writing in support of Plan E, a fully virtual option for the first semester. Working together in person in my small classroom feels very unsafe. The next option I am more comfortable with is Plan C, hoping that elementary schools will be able to spread out among the unused middle and high schools to help reduce contact and the transmission of virus. Jane Gordon, I am a fourth-grade teacher at Broad Rock Elementary School. As a teacher and a mother, I support Plan E with only a fully virtual option for the first semester. Experimenting with our children is unacceptable, period. Questions for school openings. If a teacher tests positive for COVID-19, are they required to quarantine for two to three weeks? Is their sick leave covered, paid? If that teacher has five classes a day with thirty students each, do all one hundred and fifty of those students need to stay home and quarantine for fourteen days? Do all one hundred and fifty of those students now have to get tested? Who pays for those tests? Are they happening at school? How are the parents being notified? Does everyone in each of those kids' families need to get tested? Who pays for that? What if someone who lives in the same house as a teacher tests positive? Does that teacher now need to take fourteen days off of work to quarantine? Is that time covered, paid? Ashley Perkins, I am disappointed in the inconsistencies that exist in the public comment process. I, along with many others, submitted comments for the six-twenty-nine meeting. The agenda indicated the deadline for comments. The agenda was changed at the zero hour. An email was received by speakers that their comments would be read at the July ninth meeting. Those comments were not read. We indirectly heard some markey, some malarkey, excuse me, that an announcement was made at the six-twenty-nine meeting. That previously submitted comments would not be read at the seven-nine meeting. However, after two reviews of the recorded meeting and the live tweeted thread, such a statement is not heard. Public comment is the primary venue for family, staff, and the community to give input and kudos, as well as to share their concerns. Nothing replaces the impact of a packed school boardroom and those many voices informing us all. I look forward to the. Julia Bashore, I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Broad Rock Elementary School and would like to share my preference for reopening. In my opinion, Plan A with the hybrid option might be our best bet moving forward as it leaves time to deep clean and distance without sacrificing all of our meaningful in-person activities. I know it's a hard decision, but I figure teacher input is essential. Best of luck figuring out these difficult choices. Brandon Rogers, these were a list of questions from a few parents and staff that I've had the liberty of speaking with just to give a general idea of where some of them stand. If a teacher tests positive for COVID-19, are they required to quarantine for two to three weeks? Is their sick leave covered and paid? If that teacher has five classes a day with thirty students each, do all one hundred and fifty of those students need to stay home? Where is the district going to find a substitute teacher who will work in a classroom full of exposed, possibly infected students for substitute pay? Substitutes teach in multiple schools. If they are diagnosed with COVID-19, do all the kids in the new, in each school now have to quarantine and get tested? Who is going to pay for that? What if a student in your kid's class tests positive? What if your kid tests positive? Does every other student and teacher they have been around quarantine? Do we all get notified who is infected and when? Or because of HIPAA regulations, are parents and teachers just going to get mysterious may-have-been-in-contact emails all year long? Kaitlyn Mendez, this will be my fifth year teaching in RPS. As an educator, I want, I want more than anything to be in classrooms with my students. That's why I went into teaching, to be with the students and make a positive impact emotionally, socially, and academically. I am aware of the emotional, social, academic, and the many other negative impacts the lack of in-person teaching has had on our students. I know this and want to help, but our community and school system are not yet prepared to send students back to the classrooms. Teachers are in the schools every day. We know what the reality is. The schools will not be cleaned adequately. Teachers will be responsible for even more supplies and sacrifice their health, time, and finances to make sure that the environment is up to standards, even though that is not in our job description. Although buying supplies is not required, most teachers assume this responsibility. Amy Fixler, as the parent of a rising kindergarten in the Mary Mumford District, I support Plan C that includes a fully in-person option for elementary students. The information presented by the pediatricians at the seven-nine board meeting supports this. There is low risk of COVID infection and transmission in young children and at the same time, high developmental risks if these kids are prevented, prevented from in-person learning. Virtual learning does not make sense for five-year-olds. It is not appropriate for a child that age to learn from a screen and it requires that one or more parents be available to supervise. My child is at risk of falling behind socially and academically if she is not able to return to the classroom. If the board selects Plan D, then kindergarten through third grade should be considered high-need students eligible for in-person learning. Thank you for reading. Ryan Bennett, I am a proud teacher at John V. Carey Elementary School. I'd like to share with you all my general concern with reopening by examining current data. Unfortunately, nationwide cases are trending upwards again. There is no denying that. As of Monday, July thirteenth, when I write to you, the state of Virginia's data is also again trending upwards as there were nearly a thousand cases. It's only a matter of time until the data trends upward here in Richmond locally. We are all uncertain of what the future holds, but one student, teacher, or staff member infected in RPS as a result of an RPS decision is too many. I appreciate Mr. Cameras' extended options. As the future is very uncertain for all stakeholders of the Richmond community, I fully support either Option D or Option E. Thank you. Stuart Hansberger, Plan E is the only viable option. All other options put lives at risk unnecessarily. Make this decision as soon as possible so we can start planning. Also, please reconsider implementing a new curriculum at this time as we all are already overwhelmed and unprepared for the task of virtual learning as it is. Thank you. Carolyn Meham, I would like to submit a public comment for the school board meeting. I wholeheartedly support the fully virtual plan of reopening for the 2020-21 school year. As a teacher within RPS, this uncertain time has been so difficult. I miss my students and my fellow teachers every day and there's nothing more than I've, than there's nothing more I want than to go back into my classroom and teach. However, it is simply not safe to do so. There is no vaccine. There is not enough resources to ensure our student's safety. Even if we were able to return to school, if someone contracted COVID-19, we would be right back to where we started. I believe we need to invest in improving virtual options, be committed to engaging our students and their communities, and keep things remote until it is safe for students, teachers, and staff. I believe it is also important to note that COVID-19 has disproportionately affected Black communities and communities of color and has left devastating results. Anna Martinez, I am a third-grade teacher in Richmond South Side. Richmond led the way. Richmond led the way in our region in terms of food distribution and technology support. It is time once again for Richmond to lead the way. Please vote for Plan E and keep our students safe. I am worried that our students are being used to test. Is reopening, is a reopening plan viable? I know that virtual learning will be difficult, but what will be more difficult is grieving the loss of my students and my coworkers. The only acceptable number to student deaths is zero. I implore you to save the lives of the students, families and staff you serve. Please help RPS remain the model for handling the pandemic instead of a cautionary tale in reopening. Molly Brennan, I am the parent of a rising RPS second grader and kindergartner. I am writing to voice my support and RPS's reopening Plan C. According to the most recent research, youngest students are the least susceptible to serious COVID-19 symptoms. They are less likely to transmit the virus and they are at greatest risk of falling behind due to the continued closure of schools. Plus, if my very privileged household isn't any indication, virtual school is not working. I hope that RPS can be creative in how they implement the plan, such as using the empty middle school and high schools or even churches to give the students, staff and teachers lots of room and holding as many classes as possible outside. Maybe the students could even enjoy more than one or one longer recess. Thank you for your time and consideration. Ms. Wilson?
Okay, thank you. Molly Brennan, I am the parent of a rising RPS second grader and kindergartner. I am writing to voice my support, RPS reopening Plan C. According to the most recent research, youngest students are the least susceptible to serious COVID-19 symptoms.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Andrew Bryce.
Sorry, my computer froze. Thank you. Andrew Bryce, in regards to reopening Richmond City Public Schools, I urge you to vote for option E, completely virtual. The fact that you are meeting virtually for your own safety this very moment shows schools cannot open for in-person instruction in August. I highly doubt your ability to keep our students and teachers safe as RVA schools lack toilet paper, hand soap and other essentials when there is not an emergency due to a deadly disease. If you do not vote for option E, you show to us that you do not care about the well-being of your communities. Any in-person opening of Richmond City Schools tells us the truth. You are more than willing to sacrifice the lives of your teachers, staff and students. Anthony Jones says vote for option E for the safety of students, staff and families. Janice Stuckey, I feel Plan D and E are best. Has it been discussed how the school's ventilation systems will be upgraded and school buildings will be cleaned in between classroom instruction days and throughout the school day? The current staff cannot handle it. Will students and staff wear masks all day long? Are gloves and masks provided for those that do not have them? Will students eat in the cafeteria, dining room or classrooms? How will social distancing be addressed? If a student or staff tests positive for COVID-19, what will the procedure be? Have these questions been answered? Thank you. Doug in Lorna Tempest, I am in the military and relocating to Richmond from Rhode Island. In addition, I am the father of a rising kindergartner. Rhode Island is one of the states with the smallest number of cases and has continued to maintain its positive trend even as other states are seeing a rise. My family has been very careful to minimize our contact and to always wear proper PPE, including my son always wearing a mask. In spite of the lower risk in Rhode Island and all our efforts, my son still tested positive for COVID-19. Luckily for us, he was asymptomatic and recovered, but I hate to think what could have happened if he hadn't been tested and we had visited older relatives. This leads me to a number of questions about the school opening plan and data provided. Regarding the data on infection in children, were the children in these studies cited actually tested for COVID-19? Or are they cited as not being affected simply because they were not symptomatic? Anne Forrester, I am a middle school ESL teacher and I am urging the board to choose option E, fully virtual, for at least the first semester of the 2020-2021 school year. Like many teachers, I miss my students and know that virtual learning does not best meet their needs. However, I do not feel that any other option besides fully virtual will protect mine, my colleagues, my students and their families' health. By choosing to go to the full virtual option now, we can focus our time, efforts and funding to make online learning as equitable as possible before school starts in September. Planning to be virtual now will also allow RPS to plan for community-based class meetings, tech help and check-ins that can happen in small groups and in outdoor or well-ventilated spaces on a case-by-case basis and for the safety of teachers and students. I encourage the school board again to prioritize the physical health and safety of our community and choose option E. Anne Smothers, I would prefer option C with mask requirements. I also think if the teachers switched rooms, that would be traffic down for social distancing as best as possible. I feel it is very important to get the little ones back in school. Stephen Strauss, I am a Richmond resident and RPS teacher. I am writing to support Plan E. We should not return to in-person instruction until the vaccine is widely available for COVID-19. We should not return to school unless testing and healthcare costs for staff, families and students are provided by the district. I realize the enormous impact that this virus has on marginalized communities within RPS. I worry about younger children, English learners, students with exceptional needs and families that are desperate to have their students back in class for whatever reason. However, we do not need to jeopardize the lives of students, staff and families. A return to schools will force people to subject themselves to a life-or-death scenario. Is this risk worth returning to in-person instruction? Additionally, I would like to see detailed implementation plans for any scenario in advance of any vote by the school board to allow for public feedback and comment. Lauren McAdams, I am a third grade teacher in RPS. I am writing in support of option E for a fully virtual reopening of schools for the safety of RPS students and staff. During the week of March ninth, two of my students had been hospitalized with high-grade fevers and flu-like symptoms. On Saturday, March fourteenth, the day after schools had closed for COVID-19, I checked into patient first and she talked about her diagnosis. After returning home, I treated my symptoms as prescribed and proceeded to be paralyzingly ill with a fever ranging from one oh one to one oh five degrees for the next ten days. It took over two weeks for me to regain enough strength to do simple mundane tasks around the house. Like I previously stated, I was not offered a COVID-19 test. However, my test was negative and my fever and symptoms continued for almost another week after I had completed my prescription. I would not be surprised at all if I did in fact have COVID-19. Ernie Davis, I have two friends who are teachers in RPS and I support option E, a fully virtual reopening. Do not endanger children and teachers by opening school buildings. Robin Keegan, I am a teacher and a parent in RPS schools. I support the full virtual option E. No choice is perfect, but after hearing the logistics for even a hybrid model last week, I was even more anxious. There is so much to think about. There are definitely no guarantees. The amount of money that reopening will cost is also a huge concern and this doesn't even provide full protection. Virtual is not perfect either, but navigating around those problems seems less daunting and less deadly. I feel like if we use the time we have now to plan for full virtual, we can develop workarounds that are thoughtful and supportive. I feel like we can also use this time to plan how we come out of virtual because it is not forever. I firmly believe we have teachers and staff in RPS that are empathetic and creative. We have the brain power to help build a model of virtual learning that is productive, supportive and continuous. Please vote option E. Elizabeth Yegel, I am a fifth grade, I teach fifth grade at the New Cardinal Elementary School. I had remained very hopeful that RPS would be able to implement Plan A in the fall for a variety of reasons. My mind was changed yesterday when I saw the article in the Richmond Times-Dispatch about the percentage of COVID-19 cases among the Hispanic population in the city. Nearly half of the cases in just seven percent of the city's population. The student population at Green slash Cardinal Elementary is approximately ninety-five percent Hispanic. As much as I want to be in the classroom with my students this fall, I do not believe we can take such a risk with the lives of those within the Cardinal community. Therefore, I encourage you to approve Plan E to offer a fully virtual option for RPS this fall. Please take the time between now and then to fully equip and empower RPS and staff, prepare RPS students, parents and community. Elizabeth Jorgensen, best, first and foremost, I am concerned about the mental health for our students based on what a safe reopening looks like. Students would be forced to obey strict and developmentally inappropriate behavioral expectations for us to properly social distance. This is going to be especially difficult for our students of trauma. We won't have the ability to hug them and would have to attempt to comfort and re-regulate them from three feet away, which in turn can cause attachment trauma. Many people argue that socialization is important for children's development. I agree, but we also must realize this argument doesn't work in favor of schools physically reopening because student socialization will look different. They won't be seated together, have a real recess together or even be able to face each other to talk, per CDC guidelines, and students should be facing the same direction. These stressful cleaning rituals could even traumatize our students and the high-stress Molly McPhillips, I teach eighth grade at Abrahams Middle School. I support Plan E, a fully virtual opening for the first semester. Thank you. Mia Goody, I support Plan E for the safety of our students, staff and families. Louis Luna, we are calling for Richmond Public Schools to open virtually or option E for the first semester. We believe that this will allow RPS to truly have an effective virtual open and will also allow time to create a fully funded, logistically feasible plan for reopening schools in the third semester. Thus far, we know that COVID-19 is infecting and killing black and brown people and people with autoimmune diseases at higher rates than the norm. And we also know these groups make up a large majority of the RPS personnel and students. Although children are more, children more rarely see symptoms or have died because of COVID-19, RPS students are mostly black with a growing Latinx population and many have these aforementioned diseases. We also do not know the long-term effects of COVID-19 and we do not want to see our children suffer now or in the future because of this. That is not even to mention the families that our students are going back to. Chloe Grant, I'd like to voice my opinion on schools reopening. I am a hopeful future educator of RPS and am studying at VCU. All of my professors have made the responsible decision of having classes online this fall. The numbers of COVID-19 continue to rise and putting our youth at risk is not worth being in person. Putting our teachers at risk is not worth it. We need to be wrapping around our community by making the safe decision and continue to and innovate further methods of providing support to our families who need it. For those reasons, I support option E for reopening. A virtual reopening is the only way to provide a safe reopening for our students, educators and families. Please make the right choice, vote for option E. As many others, I'd love to have our kiddos back in school, but only when it is safe. This fall, it is not safe. A virtual reopening should be the only option. Tanya Francis, combinations of Plan A and B. Have those students who are capable to complete, to do, complete virtual. If additional support is needed, time slots can be allotted for students to sign up for depending on the amount of support they will need. They can complete this virtually or in person. As for IEP students, the IEP can determine the level of support needed and how often they will need face-to-face support and virtual. This is the time where teachers need to provide input about the students and a schedule can be developed with students with similar strengths and weaknesses. There is no perfect plan, but I believe this way we are putting the students' education first, allowing all people involved to provide input on what their instructions would look like. Good luck. Rachel Saddle, what follows is a short list of questions that I have regarding the proposed plans for reopening to be considered for the meeting. Given Superintendent Cameras' statement that no staff member will be forced to work in person, what is the district proposing to do in the case of high-needs students who require in-person instruction? Those teachers have highly specialized training and are not easily replaced. Many also have built strong relationships with their students and families with whom they worked closely for several years. Will those teachers lose their caseloads, classrooms, positions at their school? What support is the district prepared to provide in terms of PPE and cleaning supplies for teachers and staff? What will sick leave look like in the era of COVID-19? How will the district accommodate students with high needs whose IEPs dictate that we should be providing services and instruction that would be unsafe or risky under COVID conditions? How can we balance personal safety? Alexandra Phipps, how frequently will teachers and staff be tested for COVID-19? What about teachers who cannot social distance with their students? I am a preschool special ed teacher and I change diapers multiple times a day. What happens when we contract COVID-19? Will we be fully covered for all medical costs? Jennifer Young, after having reviewed the reopening plans and literature provided by Superintendent Jason Cameras, I am left with several questions. Will teachers be responsible for in-person and full-virtual courses, students at the same time? If so, how will teachers provide in-person instruction and virtual instruction within a single school day? The suggested schedules previously shared for virtual courses show several live periods of instruction throughout the day. How does this work with teachers who are responsible in-person instruction? Logistically, how does this work? What are the procedures in the event of a student or employee positive COVID test result? Will employees be required to use sick hours when tested positive or quarantining due to exposure? How will staffing issues be handled in light of teachers and school employees who require telework due to health problems? Shannon Hodges, good evening, I am an RPS employee and parent of two RPS high school students. I am concerned that parents and staff have not been provided with enough information to make a sound choice between your options. Answers to the following questions could change my option choice. How will transportation meet the safety guidelines for students? Are we hiring additional custodians? What will cleaning protocols look like? If a teacher or student is diagnosed, what is the protocol? How does someone teach and at the same time manage their own children who may be learning virtually? What will professional development look like for teachers? What support will be provided as we transition to a new way of teaching? How will you fill the positions of teachers who will retire or quit? How will you handle in-person instruction if lots of teachers say they won't teach in person? How will you find and handle substitutes for those options? Are teachers expected to have some dedicated place at home to teach from or can they teach virtually from a classroom? David Pickard, good evening, I have been a kindergarten teacher with RPS for thirteen years. I am very scared for the entire RPS family. It is not safe to open schools during a pandemic. For the safety of our students, staff and families, please vote for option E. Teaching young students, I have learned they have very little self-control, especially in the beginning of the year. A class of ten students in September feels like twenty. They want to touch everything, everyone and put their hands in their mouths and in-between. Three feet or six feet will not make a difference. Social distancing will not be possible. Also, many classrooms are too small to keep students separated. Most activities in younger grades will require working together and sharing with others, which will not be allowed to prevent transmission of the virus. All the things children love about school and the social interaction that All the things children love about school and the social interaction that school provides will not be possible. Things like hugs, telling secrets, holding hands, high fives, sharing in recess. Catherine Shearer. I am a teacher at Swansboro Elementary. I would like to voice my support for reopening Option D, but only if there are adequate safety measures taken for the high-needs students and staff members who will teach them. This includes the ability for staff members to be able to go online without penalty if they decide it is no longer safe for them to be in person, and if any student, staff member, or family member is suspected or confirmed to have COVID, contact tracing needs to occur while everyone quarantines and has the ability to be tested at no cost. If students, families, or staff members need any healthcare from a COVID outbreak in a school, that call should be on the district. That being said, I don't think that RPS is able to comply with all of the recommendations and guidelines for safe reopening at this time, and therefore should go with Option E, fully virtual for all students. I do understand that there are certain students who are not Jessica Diaz. I am a teacher at Lucille Brown and for the Summer Camp at Home program. I am asking you to support and vote for Option E. I am one of the few Hispanic teachers at my school. Our school has a twenty-one percent Hispanic population. In Virginia, the Latinx population makes up ten percent of the state's population, but nearly fifty percent of all positive COVID cases. People of color in our community are contracting COVID-19 at a higher rate than families and other districts. Many of our students come from households with parents who interact with the public on a daily basis, providing essential services in grocery stores and hospitals. Just today, I spoke with an ELL parent of a summer camp student who contracted COVID-19. Her immediate concerns were trying to isolate herself and find long-term childcare for her daughter. We know that individuals can have and spread COVID-19 before showing any symptoms, which is why I think we need to show caution. Stephanie Hooks. I am writing to express my support for Option E. As a parent of two RPS students and a teacher, I am very concerned about the welfare of my children, students, and colleagues. As a teacher who has served the district for over twenty years, I recognize how challenging it is for RPS to secure the resource that we need when presented with better circumstances. It is hard to understand how the district will procure the bathroom monitors, nurses, and other supplies needed while simultaneously ensuring that windows open and ventilation systems are a-go during a pandemic. We must get this right. So many lives depend on this. I think we should wait until all our buildings and the longitudinal data shows that it is safe to go back to school. Lindsay Wilcox. I am writing to share that as a fifth-grade teacher for Richmond Public Schools, I believe that we should start the school year with everyone participating in virtual schooling. While I long to be back in the classroom with my students, I do not believe that at this time we are prepared to handle any potential outbreaks or obstacles that COVID may present if we open in the fall. I know that virtual schooling can be daunting to and there is also a valid fear that some of our students may have difficulty with remote learning. However, the daily teacher shouts and Mr. Camaras's RPS Direct continue to serve as evidence that RPS teachers are amazing and will make it happen. There is no question that teachers will bend over backwards to ensure that our students are learning in the fall. The following are some of my concerns if we open in the fall. Even if the funds are made available, are thermometers and hand sanitizer available for immediate purchase? How will we handle an outbreak within a school? Tiara Kelly. My opinion is that there should be fully virtual teaching, Plan E, for the first semester until we can get the coronavirus under control or have a vaccine by early 2021. My opinion is that for the safety of students and staff, instruction should be fully virtual for the first semester. I feel that in order to fully make sure that students and staff are safe, more time to plan is needed, as well as additional federal funding. I don't think we should rush to open schools, and we should fully rely on public health experts and not on political pressures. I am a teacher, and I am very worried for the safety of my students, colleagues, and myself. I live and help take care of three elderly family members with underlying health conditions such as diabetes, high blood pressure, asthma, lupus, heart failure, and a lung cancer survivor. I don't think we know enough about this virus to open schools prematurely this fall. I am afraid that I may pass this virus to the elderly family members that I live with. Anne Hemmelfarb. I am writing in support of a plan to at least start the school year virtually with a focus on how we can marshal the resources RPS has to support high-quality educational experiences for students and families and fairly compensate employed people. As a public librarian, I see people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities direct their own learning with the resources of a public library and the community around it. Mandatory eight-hours in the classroom schooling is only one model of education and one that clearly does not suit all students. I hope that educators, administrators, and board members will use the unfortunate circumstances created by COVID-19 and the long-term failure of governments to fully fund public education to reimagine what public education can be like. It is my strong suggestion that rather than relying only on their own imaginations or for-profit corporate educational companies and products. Jessica Parker. I am writing to you today to ask that you vote for a fully virtual option of school until the third grading period. I believe this is the RPS option. I believe this is the RPS Option E. My child is a rising third grader with health conditions. Any contact with a COVID-positive person would have drastic effects on my daughter. While I understand the importance of education and social skills, my daughter's immune system will not be strong enough to fight this thing off. So much is unknown about this virus, but what we do know is that it has the potential to kill infected persons. That is enough information for me. We must keep schools closed until more is known. Look at what Los Angeles Unified Schools just did. They have committed to an all-virtual start to their fall semester. RPS needs to vote the same and continue to implement a better, more realistic approach. Lakeisha Hendrick. My daughter will not be attending school in the fall. Tamika Hicks. I feel kids should stay home where it is safe to do Chromebooks. I am afraid for my kid's safety with this virus, and they both have asthma bad, and it's not safe for their health. And this virus is only going to get worse in the fall, so I feel Chromebook at home is safe for kids, especially my kids. I'm just protecting their health and other kids with health problems and mental illnesses. Phoenisha Christmas. I have three kids that are in school and in and in person. They need the structure of a teacher. Virtual is terrible at home. They don't take it serious. Please consider in-person as much as possible. The kids are tired of being at home, and they are losing lack of interest of school. They are really missing the in-person presence instruction. I am a single mother of four kids. It is very hard. Heather Simpkins. As a teacher in Henrico County, I hope that whatever the board decides, it matches other county plans. It would be very difficult for myself, as I am sure countless others who may have to go back into work to have a child on a completely different schedule. Not every parent has the luxury or ability to work from home or have a spouse who stays home. I suggest we all go back to school in person and take it from there. All children need face-to-face instruction regardless of their background or needs. As a teacher, I need to meet my students and get to know them before I can switch to virtual instruction. Thank you for your time. Mary Eck. I am a teacher in an elementary school at RPS. I am in support of Option E at this time until it is safe to return. With the continued rise of COVID in our state, I am worried about the safety of staff and children. While I know a virtual option would be challenging for students and families, I can't imagine how difficult it would be if someone in their class family gets sick because we reopen while the virus is still a threat to our community. While the percent of kids who die excuse me, who die from COVID is low, any percent is too much when it is a question of life and death. Kiara Barnes. I wanted to reach out to you and the school board to express my concern of returning back to school in the fall. I have two children that attend RPS. My oldest thirteen and younger seven. My thirteen-year-old is a hugger. No matter how much I explain to her that now is not a good time, she hugs out of instinct. I cannot guarantee that after months of not seeing her friends, she won't hug anyone. My seven-year-old was born a preemie. She survived being born at twenty-seven weeks. She is more to herself and timid. Today, you'd never know any of that by looking and talking to her. She's very different than her big sister. However, I will say she didn't survive the NICU to be demised by COVID. I am not a fan of the fall return in no way. Not for the teachers and mainly the students. Please reconsider starting in 2021. I know it's hard for everyone, but I don't want to risk my children's lives. Thank you for listening. Be blessed. Deidre Wallerson. I honestly think that elementary school should be virtual because the young kids are not going to understand social distancing as much as the older kids. Plus, to keep a mask on. I have a hard time now with my eight-year-old for him to keep his mask on, and I have to always remind him to wash his hands after he touches anything. Dr. Harris.
Morella Cruz, Virtual School. Renee Bowers. I am a third-grade teacher at Broad Rock Elementary in the Eighth District, as well as a city resident in the Sixth District. I am writing to you this evening to urge you to support Option E for reopening, a fully virtual option. As a teacher, I want nothing more to be in the classroom with my students, but I refuse to do so at the risk of their health, my health, or the health of my colleagues. There are simply too many questions and uncertainties when it comes to this virus. The reality is we aren't prepared to safely open in person. No one's life is worth the risk to me. Aleah Jenkins Rogers. Hello. As a preschool employee for RPS, how does preschool fit into the proposed options? Personally, I do not agree with starting in-person sessions for preschoolers this September. I feel that there are too many risks, especially for the preschool staff. Please consider all preschool programs, staff, families, and students when creating proposals. I hope that the preschool programs are mentioned and included in all necessary changes and updates for the 2020-21 school term. Thank you. Shannon Spicer. I just wanted to say thank you for all you are doing. I truly cannot fathom being in the board's position, having to make such tough decisions today and every day. I do want to make a quick comment regarding the in-person five-day option for students with needs. Like our amazing L students, please remember at the wonderful Cardinal Elementary, we have a majority L population, which would mean that the five-day option could potentially allow way more students than the average school in one building, given the large amount of Ls we do have. I know you all have much to consider, but wanted that to be part of. Thank you so much for all that you do. Frances Fry. The COVID-19 numbers are steady going up, and how are y'all going to protect our kids from this virus? Makia Brooks. I have a rising kindergartner, and I believe that Plan A with the hybrid option is the best option. My son is an only child, and it is very important for him to be able to socially interact with his peers. I believe that the hybrid option will help keep the classroom sizes small so that social distancing can still be done to keep the students and teachers safe. This option also allows the younger students to enter into a virtual learning experience that they will most likely need to adopt in the future. Jen Jefferson. I do not feel safe sending my seven- and eight-year-old to school until a vaccine hopefully is found. Elizabeth Wait. I do not envy your position one bit in deciding on how schools will reopen this fall. I have participated in the reopening committee, talked with dozens of my fellow teachers, read the news articles and school board comments, and listened to your debates. And at this point, I don't even know which plan I would recommend. There is simply no right decision. However, there is a wrong decision. The worst possible decision you can make tonight is to make a decision at all. I know everyone wants more time to hear from people is to not make a decision at all. I know everyone wants more time to hear from people, talk to more experts, get more data and information and ideas. We all wish we had started planning for this sooner, but there is no getting that time back, and we have very little time moving forward. It is better to have an imperfect plan that we have time to fix a perfect plan we cannot hope to implement by September eighth. The administration and support staff. Ella Ayew. In my opinion, we shouldn't waste our time, and we should start with Plan E. If data will prove that it is safe to reopen the school buildings, then transition to another plan won't be complicated. Sarah Warner. I would support having a fully in-person or in-person two-day-a-week plan. Please also give consideration to parents that have children in different schools. I have one in elementary and one in middle school, and I would like them to be in-person on the same days if we do have an in-person option. Martin McFadden. Although I myself live in Richmond, but do not have children of my own in the RPS system, I understand you are challenged with making a very serious decision tomorrow, July fourteenth. I am writing to ask that you would give serious consideration to voting for Option E to reopen schools this fall for the safety of the RPS students, staff, and families. I appreciate your attention to this situation and respect your decision. Kristin Reinbold. I am emailing you to express my concerns regarding the current potential fall reopening plans. Although students may have a relatively low risk of contracting the virus, this age group is mostly unstudied at this point, and therefore, this risk isn't entirely known at this point in time. Additionally, given the number of adults in school buildings between teachers, custodians, security, administration, et cetera, a single infected adult could still possibly spread COVID-19 amongst the staff before the infection is caught. Given the number of our staff that fall under the high risk for complications from infection, I would like to voice my opinion that Option E plan would be the safest to follow at this point. Janay White. I am emailing to express my concerns regarding the current potential fall reopening plans. Although students may have a relatively low risk of contracting the virus, this age group is mostly unstudied at this point, and therefore, the risk isn't entirely known at this point in time. Additionally, the number of adults in any school building between teachers, custodians, security, administration, et cetera, a single infected adult could still potentially spread COVID-19 amongst the staff before the infection is caught. Given the number of staff that fall under high risk for complications from infection, I would like to voice my opinion that Option E plan would be the safest to follow at this point. Leslie Saul. City resident and community advocate for Congolese refugees' families. It is currently not safe to open schools. Open schools physically only when you have a plan that is based on science and statistics, a plan that is totally funded, when teachers don't need to buy masks from their own money for the kids who don't have one. In addition to buying toilet paper, snacks, wipes, and classroom supplies, when there is adequate testing and tracing accessible with fast turnaround time for results, when you have air conditioning and healthy ventilation in every classroom, when you pay bus drivers and other staff a living wage, when you are honest about the hugely disproportionate impact of COVID on our Black and Brown families who are the majority of our students, who are not expendable for any reason, when teachers are not penalized for prioritizing their own and their family's health, when you base your decision on the reality of our community spread rather than on the research quoted by Jennifer Eisner. I've written this email multiple times. Each version gets shorter and shorter with respect for your time and acknowledging the number of emails you must be receiving. The below is as concise as I can make it. My student is a rising high school senior. He is currently suffering from concern about virtual learning for next year. I understand this stress. Virtual school is not effective, and all virtual plan for any age group of students is not acceptable. Virtual school is performing education, full stop. Virtual school is performing education, full stop. Possibly in tandem with in-person learning and behavioral policies. Public education in the time of COVID might have a chance. For sure, high school students can understand and take on the responsibilities of in-person school. Masks, physical distance, hand washing, sanitizing, temperature checks. A-one-strike-your-out policy is not unreasonable or harsh. Tawana Wood, I am a special teacher, and I am against coming back at this time. I am willing to do virtual with my students to the best of my ability, but safety is my first priority. Also, I've been hearing a lot about childcare or daycare. We aren't professional babysitters. We shape minds, and when circumstances change, we can do that. We can do just that, but for now, it's time for parents to be parents and not shift the responsibility to anyone else. We are tired and can't breathe. We have worked tirelessly under many trying circumstances. This should not be an option or ongoing discussion. Shut the country down and let's get healthy. Sherry Paulchul, I will keep my comments short. I would just like to say that due to great concern for our students, I would prefer to go with Plan E. I would rather have only virtual classes for the first semester, but true classes, not worksheets. I understand that this isn't the best method of teaching, but we have never had a situation such as this before. I would like to give scientists a little more time to create a vaccination. As a teacher, I want to be in a classroom. As a parent, I am terrified to send my daughter to school. Please consider Plan E as an option. Dolary Gardner, I support virtual learning fully. My daughter is a high school student who lives in the home with me and dad. Her father had a condition and on his right side due to having surgery three years ago, and not to mention other conditions. I'm in my mid, I'm in my fifties, dad is in his sixties, and there is no way I can consider sending my daughter back to school. I will be taking a chance that my daughter may contract this virus, which has sickened many people. After all, students were doing virtual learning at home during the months of April, May, and June, when school ended during the summer. So why is it not possible to keep doing virtual learning at home? This way, parents know that their child or children are safe. Has anyone thought if teachers were asymptomatic that they can spread the virus throughout the schools, which can cause the school to shut down? Is reopening schools fully about losing funding? What matters the most? Natalie Patino Wright, thank you for inviting my input. As a teacher and mother, I feel that I have dual perspectives. Going back to school is something we all want. However, what kids need more than being inside a school or even online is consistency. Having situations drastically change at a moment's notice is not good for anyone. It is a huge disruption to learning. I would argue that learning in school will be more difficult, given the many restrictions in place. Students last year already complained that school felt like jail. They had to walk a certain direction in the hallway, sit at assigned tables for lunch in class. I feel that restricting them more would take away from actual learning and would be more policing than anything else. I would also ask the school board to consider a delayed opening until thorough preparations are in place. I believe that a virtual opening for most students and teachers would be the safest and most consistent plan going forward. Thomas Devon, I'm not sure who to email in time to better understand the two plans before the board meeting. There are two plans that don't exactly match. I have attached them below and highlighted the differences in green and yellow. I am not clear whether both plans are based on fifty percent of the students physically in buildings. I am also confused whether the parent and staff survey responses are being considered in the reopening plan, since the plans presented in the surveys are vastly different from the plans in the RPS direct emails. Mary Beth Murray, we are parents with two children in RPS schools. Professionally, we happen to be a child slash adolescent mental health clinician and a school psychologist. We believe safety is paramount and do not support the district in taking on the risk of illness and death of our community members. We support a fully virtual option so the district can immediately plan a robust distance learning curriculum and logistics. We know isolation has severely impacted youth and all citizens, and want students to have access to peers and teachers, as well as social emotional services. We ask that the district simultaneously and aggressively plan for in-person services to resume. We would like to see a clear and fast-moving project plan to achieve the necessary steps mentioned last meeting, such as hiring nurses, repairing sinks, upgrading HVAC, et cetera. Amy Skolnick, I am a pharmacist at a chain pharmacy in Carytown, as well as a resident of the second district. I would like to reach out and let you know that I vote Option E to have a completely virtual school opening. I understand the benefit of in-person class, and as my mom has been a school teacher in Charlottesville for twenty years. But I also understand the importance of social distancing and know that our youth may try their best to stay healthy, but illness spreads like wild in schools. Sarah Nunnally, I am a preschool special education teacher, and I wanted to give my opinion in the plans for reopening. I feel that Plan E of going fully virtual for the first semester would be the best option right now, due to the growing number of cases in and around the Richmond area. With all of the guidance and restrictions in place at this time, a fully enriched and inclusive preschool setting seems unattainable. I am also concerned that preschool is often overlooked and will not get the resources or help that we require to function if we open. Although, I do with a heavy heart understand the need to get kids in the classrooms, especially our students with IEPs. They simply won't have enough resources accessible at home or the specialized instruction they require. I want what is best in the long run for my students, and I feel waiting till the numbers have lowered and we can put in place some functional guidelines for how this will look will be best in the long run. Thank you for taking the time. Mira Singer and Abby Kinbrew, thank you for the work you are doing on the pandemic and school options before us. We have a rising first grader in RPS and are following everything closely. We are interested and open to the virtual and in-person options and will continue to weigh the pros and cons as the final decision is made. However, we also feel stuck in a situation of not having enough details to fully support and weigh in on the in-person options. And considering the in-person options, we would like to know the class size and if it will differ between the two-day and five-day options. This is an important detail for students and teachers alike. Also, during the last school board meeting, the importance of and the need for innovations and instruction was highlighted. We would also say that the same should be true for the creation of learning environments. Maximum flexibility and innovation is needed. For instance, Alice Meyer, assuming that teachers only work in person if they want, and assuming the situation with the virus that is today, then I feel Plans A, D, and E are the only viable options, ranking them in the order of A being the best option. George Smallfield, I think we should go with Plan B or C, offering full in-person schooling to students that elect it, or at least to elementary school students that elect it. I agree. No student should be forced to go to school, and no high-risk teacher should be forced to teach in person. There should be an in-person incentive for teaching, as wouldn't we all like to work from home these days? Children don't transmit this disease well and also have good outcomes when infected. This means risk can be managed. It seems rare to have more than two to three adults in a classroom at a time. That allows for a lot of distancing. Virtual teachers should have accounted for a full work week to ensure they are doing at least as much as those working in person. This could help improve the variable quality of online-only teaching across RPS in the spring for those uncomfortable coming to work and kids uncomfortable returning to school, with much of the community working in higher-risk environments. Mr. and Mrs. W. Cooper, I am writing to express my concern about the reopening of RPS schools under the current conditions we are facing. My husband and I are both essential workers, so work for us is not an option. However, allowing our two autistic asthmatic, one with severe allergy sons, third and fourth grades, is. Virtual learning will be a sacrifice, and we are willing to make it in order to keep our children safe and alive. RPS, RPS school buildings are already in poor condition, i.e. poor ventilation systems, mold, poorly working facilities, as is, and to send children back without decent conditions is just awful. How can you possibly attempt to send children, teachers, and staff back knowing the above conditions and promise to have funding for the items that were listed in last meeting by September eighth? Shelley J., what will the process be for issues in the main office, morning crowds, kids are always late? Is it worth the risk of children to be exposed to each other so closely on the bus then at school? Many of the parents are considered essential staff. Can the kids learn from home? Miracle Johnson, I am not good with teaching my kids full-time. I'm thankful for the computers, but even with that, I'm still having a hard time. They are in daycare for nine hours a day. I know for sure daycare can't help every child also. My kids are the only ones there from Fairfield. I also feel like they need, they need to have face-to-face learning. Looking at a screen all day is not good. Joan Kindig, I have two granddaughters in RPS, grades two in kindergarten. Please do not reopen this fall in person. It is too dangerous, and we don't know what COVID can really do to children. As a former educator, I know well that measures like wearing masks, maintaining social distancing, and washing hands are not reliable for young children. Please save the children. Coretta Atkins, Plan E, don't make Trump moves. Even DeVos has admitted to children fatalities. Be smart, have a heart, make RPS a virtual start. Angie Prentice, in my honest opinion, I don't think it's a good idea to go back. Children should learn virtually, especially ones who have underlying issues. My son will do virtual. He's asthmatic. Sorry, I'm not taking any chances with my son's life. I'll never forgive myself if something happened to him. Cynthia Green, I am an elementary school teacher in RPS. I'm asking that the board vote for Option E. It's the only safe option at this point. The virus isn't going anywhere, and we should not risk the lives of our students, teachers, and school staff, not even one life. You cannot guarantee that we will be safe and no one will get this virus if schools are open. We, the world, the U.S., didn't want this pandemic, but it's here. We have to act responsibly. Yes, students will get behind, but that is not just in RPS. It's across the country and world. Let's step back and think about this. Choose Option E. Gordano Buffo, I'm writing in favor of Option E for this fall, virtual for the first semester. I have two kids of my own, a seven-year-old and a two-week-old, and simply do not want to risk bringing COVID home to them. I think there are way too many unknowns for students and staff to be able to fully go back to in-person in the fall. What happens if there's another outbreak at a school or another RPS school? While I miss my students more than anything, I would much rather be safe than sorry and wait until we are able to go back safely. Rachel Smith, I am a Title I mathematics teacher at GH Reed. I'm entering my eighteenth year teaching for Richmond Public Schools. I'm very proud to be an RPS employee. As an employee and a parent of a rising kindergarten, I support Option E, a fully virtual reopening. One of my biggest concerns with in-person teaching is that it will look nothing like we are, what we are used to. As educators, we have learned best practices in elementary education. Students should be able to have conversation, work in small groups, have their hands on manipulatives and books. Teachers should not be the sage on the stage. Students in elementary school are used to working in groups and having hands-on experiences. In our current COVID nineteen situation, students having to be careful to stay three feet with a mask or six feet away, it will make these best practices very difficult. Classrooms will look more like factory setups with desks in columns and rows in order to safely distance students and teachers. Kurt and Danny Whitfield, if a teacher tests positive for COVID nineteen, are they required to quarantine for two to three weeks? Is their sick leave covered or paid? These are all questions that have been shared already. Thirty percent of teachers in U.S. are over fifty. About sixteen percent of total deaths in the U.S. are people between the ages of forty-five and sixty-five. We are choosing to put our teachers, students, and each and every one of their families in danger. Evan Young, parent of rising kindergarten, kindergartner here. For what it's worth, I think the Plan B option being considered at tomorrow's meeting makes the most sense. If those who make, want to return in person, make good distancing decisions outside the classroom, the school year may just go fine. If the, if the virus makes school unattainable, then there is an up-and-running virtual option to fall back on. Jordan Pie, I am a resident of the second district, and I support Option E, a fully virtual school opening. Please protect the health and safety of students, teachers, staff, and their families above all else. Above all else. Juan Camayo, I'm a teacher at Thomas Jefferson High School. I welcome the return of school if it is done the right way. Socially correct regulations must be followed to the letter. My concerns are as follows. Number one, transportation for our students are safe and will adhere to safety regulations. Number two, class size should follow the health requirements. Perhaps shorter classes would enable teachers to teach fifteen students, then and next fifteen, and so on. Number three, RPS to provide sufficient face covering for staff and students. Four, hand sanitizers for every classroom, as well as disinfectant wipes. Five, screen teachers, staff, and students every day prior to entering and leaving school. Six, school administration and RPS to assist in communicating to students and parents about the importance of following social distancing rules. Also assist teachers and staff in enforcing the safety regulations. Let's start school the right way. Marcy Samaro, I'm a kindergarten teacher for RPS and a resident. Below is my reflection. Thank you in advance for listening to my concerns and suggestions and to the many concerns within our community. Although one of my favorite things about teaching is seeing these bright-eyed children full of energy and ready to learn, I fear for everyone's overall health and potential academic decline because we are not prepared. I have been teaching RPS virtual summer camp for the last few weeks, and parents are daily telling me how wonderful online learning is and that their child is learning. As I have listened to parent concerns and dealt with the effects of COVID nineteen in my own life, I fully support Plan A. Here are some of the deciding factors. One, health factors of students and staff. Two, work obligations of our parents. Three, the fact that the state of many of our school buildings would not even be considered a healthy breathing environment. Latasha Wyatt, I think it should be a hundred percent virtual, especially with COVID nineteen rate going back up. Tracy Sampson, during the shutdown, I have had one child swallow half a bottle of something and a half-hearted but still scary something else. And another who absolutely refuses to do the virtual schooling while she calls it boring and repetitive. I am terrified of what a year with no school will look like for my family, as both my husband and I must go in for work. I read many comments on the RPS survey by teachers and parents that we must wait to go back to school until there is a vaccine. What if that takes two years or more? What if it never happens? How long do we keep our students out of school to maintain a no-risk situation for adults when we know the high cost for our kids? There has to be a set of criteria in terms of the rate of cases and the standards of social distancing that allow the schools to reopen, and the state and the city need to prioritize achieving those criteria. Richmond has a very reasonable number. Jackie Small, please vote for Option E, a full virtual reopening. As I'm writing this, Virginia- As I'm writing this, Virginia has roughly nine hundred more confirmed COVID nineteen cases than when schools closed in March. With the current percent of tests coming back positive holding steady, not decreasing, early school closing is likely one of the most effective preventative measures we could have taken when we did. And with numbers rising, it is critical that our school board do everything in their power to prevent the spread of illness and the potential death of any student, teacher or faculty. Nicole Johnson, I love teaching. I, like many others, understand the mental, emotional, physical, social and academic importance of having children back in school. I support Plan E, opening virtual only for the first semester. It's the only way to ensure the safety of students, teachers and their families. Also, it allows more time for the public health profession to gather more data on COVID nineteen. The possible second surge and how to best move forward in keeping citizens safe. Choosing Plan E now instead of later would allow parents and teachers several weeks to prepare for the new school year. Plan E would allow teachers to spend our time preparing to effectively implement and navigate the two new curriculums virtually. Lauren Mathina, thank you for sharing your options for the coming school year. Liz Dorr shared online, the flexibility and variety you have offered are incredible. I couldn't be more impressed with what you all have come up with. If it's doable, I would support Plan A since it would serve the greatest variety of needs throughout the community. I also want to give an enthusiastic, no reservations, a hundred percent endorsement of the RPS at home summer camp program. As a parent, I'm impressed with the organization and presentation of the whole program. I rarely see programs this organized and well put together anywhere, let alone in a public school system. I've been able to find answers to any questions that have come up. The emails Angela writes sends are just right, not too much and not too little. For what it's worth, I'm a writer and marketing professional by trade, so people hire me to put together communications plans like this one. I am thoroughly impressed by the professionalism, thoroughness. Monique Farrell, I have a rising sixth grader with many health issues and I will not agree to put her in harms way, nor will I put my other three children in harms way. If we can do school virtually a hundred percent, this is much safer for everyone. Please consider the health of our children and our future. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Owen, it has been two hours. What is your pleasure?
Unmute. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you, Dr. Harris. I appreciate your hard work, reading all those comments. And so we are now going to go to, as soon as I get it up here, the list of the people and. Okay. So this is also a long list. But here are what we have. We have first the choice and then the name of the person making that choice or people making that choice. So I'll start with preference A and B. That was Tanya Francis. Three days a week, Keisha Tyson. A, Julia Bayshore, Mackaya Brooks, Casey Paulsenisk, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it, Marcy Semenera, Latasha Wyatt, Lauren Mathina, Luanne Jordan. A and D, Tracy Knox. A or B or C, Megan Kaser. A or C, Michelle Cox. A or D E, Alice Mayer. A or E, Frances Johnson. A, B and C, Murray Withrow. Going for all B, we have Sonia Sorrell, Lauren Withrow, Malika Morse, Evan Young, Megan Quinn, David Stock, Demetria Turner, Emily Stock. Kami Harper, it's something else that got cut off there. Cody Nystrom wants B or C, as does Lauren Early and Mark Lipshultz and George Smallfield. And then for C, we had a person who didn't provide a name. We have Brother Spencer, Amy Bixler, Molly Brannon, Annette Smother, Michelle Walton. For C and two days for middle school and high school, we have Anita Buck. For C or D, Amanda Bryant. C or E, Goller, Cardwell and Graham Sturm. Then we had concerns relating to reopening for pre-K from Cheryl Thompson and Leah White. For D, Catherine Shearer. D or E, Ryan Bennett, Janice Ducky, Kayla Carruthers, Rebecca Bates. For E, Catherine Schenk, Deborah Morgan, Latonya Kelly, Beth Knox, Latricia Tate, Shayla Riggs, Karen Colby, Claire Mitchell, Katerina Mama, Mom, I can't read the whole thing. Mamiron, Mary Toomes, Caitlin Seaglirix, Samantha John, Phil Ripke, Marina Bluff, Allison Verden, Evelyn Lichtman, Nina Ford, Katilia Cash Young, Kate Wright, Marison Men- Mansier, Candace Nunnally, Kay Erin Willis, Pamela Carter, Crystal Drake, Amanda Tricky, Quinn Rents, Megan Reimer, Tracy and Wayne, I'm sorry, that last name is cut off, Lee Resnick, Janet Lundey, Dana Bowser, Alyssa Freeman, Gus Caldwell, Kelly Giroux, Pia Spinner, Kalen Bryce, Diane Dwyer, Arthur Van- Van Hender, again, cut off, Tisha Sparzak, Emma Munus, Alison Garrett, Claire LaFue, Courtney Pendergrass, Heather Johnson, Melvin Hostman, Sherry Holmes, Emily Wilson, Summer Schilling something, Martha Wingfield, Jane Gordon, Anshlee Perkins, Robert Guide, Caitlin Mendez, Megan McPherson, I think, Stuart Harnsberger, Andrew Bryce, Anthony Jones, Isabel Griffin, Stephen Strauss, Lauren McAdams, Ernie Davis, Robin Keegan, Elizabeth Yule, Molly McPhillips, Mia Moody, Louis Nunea, Leemoo Jackson, Chloe Chloe Grant, Heather Beltran, The McPhirlands, McFarlands, Janelle Harris, Winston Tank, Nicole Davidson, Andy Russell, David Pickard, Henrietta Hill, Stephanie Hooks, Lindsay Wilcox, Tiara Kelly, Mary Eck, Renee Bowers, Emily Illey, Martin McFadden, Kristen Reinhold, Reinbold, Janay White, Leslie Saul, Sherri Paulchell, Megan Cool, Amy Skolnik, Sarah Nunnally, Demira Rooster, Demire Gallo, Coretta Atkins, Angie Prentice, Cynthia Green, Jordano Buffalo, Rachel Smith, Jordan Pie, Jackie Small, Nicole Johnson, Nick Onion, Victoria Pearson, Jessica Clark, Angela Allen, Jessica Albariza, Jessica Shim, Jessica Good, Josette Bailey, Mark Mallory, Naisha Rama, Andrea Dungy, Keith Brown, Jamie Weinstein, Greg Dyer, Emily Spencer, Patricia Woodbury, Sharice Eglan, Victoria Wilson, Rena Berlin, Jamie Midyat, Laura Kinaman, Ashley Levesque, Claire Smith, Ed Timmons, Gary Huff, Amanda Snyder, Kathy Kelly, Marissa Dearborn, Brooke Allman, Natalie Messick, Beth Berlin, Sarah Hunter, Christian Rockwell, Amanda Reisner, Keisha Christian, Jason Roberts, Brittany Flippin, Rosa Hobson, Matthew Kitchen, Chris Lombardi, Gavariel Ellett, Tara Seth, Rachel Macedo, Victoria Fitzgerald, Raven Archer, Burke Willis, Jamie Gilbert, sorry, can't get the rest, Lisa Lippman, Catherine Marchetti, Robin Sawyer, Diane Marshall, Karina Barker, Amanda Pigott, Angela Cosby, Maya Parson, Sarah Beth, can't see the end, Patrick Vanhulli, Sarah Donahoe, Carrie Treadway, Cynthia Reyes, Jean Rice, Rebecca Field, Anne Van Divender, Alicia Winning, Stacy Brown, Deanna Fiero, Rashad Johnson, Alejandro Rios, Amy Brown, Latanja Mackey, Tamora Bynum, Carrie Richardson, Rebecca Elder, Anonymous, Susan Hudgens, Alicia Eversole, Kristen Lennox, John Field, Megan Pretzold, name not provided, Tracya Buster, Sabrina Gross, Sharon Gilbert, I'm sorry, can't see the second half, Jasmine Sheffield, name not provided, Jessica Rucker, Ayesha Smith, Gregory Music, Morgan Colliton, Brandon Treche, Philip Kennedy, Chameka Mace, Megan Byrd, Rashida Thompson, Adante Wade, Alexandria Ginsburg, Robert and Shannon, sorry, can't see the last name, Quincy Wilson, Latrina, Lauren Weaver, Caroline Mahon, Anna Martinez, Ann Forrester, Elizabeth Jorgensen, Rachel Pennell, can't see the last name, sorry, Jessica Diaz, Ben Himmelfarb, Jessica Parker, Lakeisha Hendricks, Tamika Hicks, Kiara Barnes, Deidra Wallerson, Morella Cruz, Azali Jenkins, Jen Jefferson, Tawana Wood, Dalry Gardner, Natalie Patino, sorry, can't get the rest, Mary Beth Murray, Mr. And Mrs., can't see the name, W. Something that starts with a C. Joan Kindig, Monique Farrell, Melissa Kates, KB Besichas, James Wagner, Nancy Savage. E, later progressing to option C, Carly Fisher. E or D, if sufficient air quality is provided for students with disabilities, that was Keisha King. High school in person, Stephanie Cumberson maybe? Uh, hybrid, Amanda Gibson, Tanika Fenner, Robin Jones, May something. In person, Jennifer Eisner, Mary Thorne, Cindy Griffin, Tykeisha Booker, L. Paige Shallow, Margaret Cook, Kenesha Christmas, Miracle Johnson. Sarah Warner is in person or hybrid. In person with questions, Juan Camayo. In person or at least some ability to occasionally meet in person, that is Jason Dietz. Mary Shell offers most to least desirable, B being the most, C, A, D, E. Ismail Kia, outdoor teaching. And then people with questions and concerns who did not make and a choice of an option. Okay? So I'm going to stop there. I'm sorry, I apologize for all of you whose name I butchered. But I think that you can get the drift of where our public comment was going. Okay? So that ends our public comment period. And so we move to Board Action Item 3.01. Receive for action, the recommended school reopening scenario. Mr. Cameras.
Thank you so much, Ms. Owen, and thank you so much to the board and certainly to the public. What I'd like to do is just briefly show options D and E so that they're formally entered into the record, given the discussion. And so I'm going to do that. Before I do so, I just want to say how, um, how appreciative I am, and I know everybody on the board is, for the time and energy that folks put into sharing their perspectives. Um, I know I personally received hundreds of emails and texts and phone calls and I know board members did as well. And, um, each one of those was powerful and moving. And, um, you know, the, the life circumstances every RPS family, teacher, student is facing right now are, are unique and place different demands on each of us. Um, but they are all important and, um, I'm confident that whichever direction we ultimately take, that with empathy for each other's life circumstance, together we will be able to provide an excellent education for our children and, most importantly, protect their safety and health as well as that of our staff. So with that, just very briefly, I'm going to share my screen. And the document that is uploaded on Board Docs just shows at a high level the summary of Plan A. As a reminder, this is the hybrid plan with students being split up and coming on alternate days for maximum physical distancing. Plan B is the full virtual and full in person with an option for both. Plan C, one of the first of the newer ones that I introduced uh, on Friday, would be a full virtual path for middle and high school, along with an in-person path available for elementary school. Plan D is a full virtual path for about ninety-five percent of our students, along with an in-person option for certain high need students. And, um, as you can see in the presentation, we listed out what some of those high need students, who they might be um, and how many staff we would need. And then, um, finally, Plan E is the full virtual option. And because virtual is a component of all the plans, we just outlined a few high level bullets. I'm certainly glad to come back to a deeper dive on what virtual instruction will look like at our next board meeting on the twentieth. Um, but just wanted to clarify, the format of virtual instruction would be much more like RPS summer camp at home than RPS at home from the spring. So it'd be a combination of live teaching where in real time, a teacher and student are where in real time, a teacher and student are interacting along with what we call playlist instruction, which is the use of online videos, online documents that you would read and respond to, and many of the online applications, educational applications that we use, things like Reflex Math and Philocabular. But it would be a much more interactive experience than we had this past spring. Second, on devices, we believe it would be important to get a Chromebook into every one of our students' hands, regardless of economic need. As you know, over the spring, we focused on those families who could not afford devices. But we believe, given that we will have a virtual option in any plan, making sure that everybody is on the same system with access to our applications, logins, and technology updates, which we're able to easily push out with Chromebooks, would be important. Also, making sure that we have additional hotspots for families that need it and additional devices for staff that may not have a device that they may need. So we would reserve a significant portion of our CARES funds for those purposes. As for platform, we would use Google Classroom as our learning management system. It's what we're using this summer for RPS summer camp at home along with some other applications. You'll see a few listed there that would help make the interactivity of the learning even higher. The next training, based on the survey, we know teachers have varying needs in terms of training for virtual instruction. So we'll create a tiered approach to training for our teachers, which of course we'll provide over the next several weeks. And the training would be on technical aspects, things like how do you use Google Classroom, but also on the pedagogical aspects, things like how do you continue to engage students during virtual instruction? And last, accountability, we've had lots of questions about this. Yes, there would be attendance. Of course, we have to work through what exactly that looks like. But there would be, assignments would be graded, they would have to be submitted on time, report cards would go out. And so all of those typical student learning accountability measures would be in place. So let me stop the share and just come back to the group. I will share that I personally have struggled a great deal with how to proceed. My heart and my mind have been torn in different directions by all of the very powerful, very moving stories I've heard from families and from teachers, from students. And I just want to acknowledge how difficult this is and that, as I have shared and many of you have shared, there is no one right solution. And no matter what path we take, it will cause inconvenience or hardship for some group of people. And I wish that weren't the case. But sadly, we are, we only have hard and less than optimal choices in front of us today. But after enormous reflection and listening and reading and grappling with all of the community feedback, my recommendation to the board is to adopt Plan E, the full virtual option. I think there's overwhelming family and staff feedback from all different parts of our community indicating that that is their preferred option. And while I know it will cause hardship for many families, particularly those who have significant childcare needs, our number one obligation is the health and safety of our students and our families and our staff. And so I humbly submit to you Plan E for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to motion that the board adopt Option E with the, with a full report that would be given to the board at each of our upcoming meetings to, to speak to the progress of our plan and in progressing towards virtual.
Okay.
A second.
All right, so Ms. Wilson, Ms. Gibson made the motion to adopt Plan E and with regular updates to the board about progress in planning. Mr. Barlow seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms. Page?
Also to add to that motion that this board, we and the administration, we reassess, we evaluate the plan to reopen in January at the appropriate time.
All right.
And we can be able to make an informed decision.
So are you?
Sound decision.
So are you proposing that as an amendment to this motion?
To add to that motion.
Ms. Gibson, do you accept the amendment to revisit at the appropriate time whether or not to continue virtual?
I think that was included in my original motion.
Okay. All right. Any, yes, let's see. I have Mr. Young and then Ms. Gibson, Dr. Supini, Ms. Burke, Ms. Dorr, Mr. Barlow. So we'll start with Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't belabor the very eloquent remarks that the superintendent just spoke to and how candidly there, we are, like all districts across the country, stand with circumstance where we have to select for lack of better description, the least of bad options. All the options are bad. I, I do have reservation as it relates to Option E because it does seem to be a variance with the science provided by Danny Avula and his, and his team of doctors and scientists the other day distinguishing between under age of 12 and this under age, or ex- age 12. What's, what's more, I, I have concern as it relates to exclusively virtual in that it precludes our stakeholders or teachers and families from having, from having any agency or decision-making process in regards to what is best for, as the superintendent said, their unique circumstances. And, and then what's even more, I, I'm very concerned, to say the least, for thousands of students in RPS who are very concerned, will likely be, what will amount to arguably close to a year, a year behind, a year, year behind in capacity to read and comprehend and to write and to do math. I, I, I'm concerned as it relates to virtual, exclusively virtual for our youngest or littlest of ones along with our high-demand students, that we, we recognize and understand that the virtual will not be adequate despite our very... I, I'm concerned as it relates to Option E for all the, what, what I'm particularly concerned about is how many of our families will be evicted. God forbid, they have to face the circumstances of homelessness for all the reasons that, that an eviction could mean for, for them. What's more exclusive virtual doesn't seem to comport with the survey, the survey results. And then, and then lastly, and obviously persons referenced all, all these points. But, but lastly, it seems that a, an exclusive precludes our capacity to course correct and adopt should, should the science... That it, it precludes us from, from doing where, where instead a hybrid approach would, would allow us to, to course on September 8th. So those concerns under reservations as it relates to the other, the Option E or exclusively virtual, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our last meeting, I, I think I made my position on this clear, or so I tried. And so I'm thankful that, that it appears that our board will be moving forward with a plan that, that puts the health of our, our students above all else. You know, frankly, I've, I've been disappointed that, that this isn't a decision that was made above, you know, above our school board. Because ultimately, this is really not just about our students. It's not just about our staff. It's about the neighbors of our students and our staff and the coworkers of our students and staff. This is a public health issue that impacts the entire community. And, and so I really think that this was not a difficult choice. In fact, this was probably one of the easier choices that I have made in my tenure on the board. When we are faced to make life and death decisions, I, I think, I think that the answer is pretty straightforward. And so I do want to ask that we look at or formalize also some, some of our next steps. I, I would like for the board to agree that we give our community a four-week notice on when we'll be back in school. And I think, you know, we will, you know, we're looking at January, but, but certainly if circumstances change and it is possible to bring folks back to school earlier, I, I think that we should certainly be open to doing so. I would like the board to review our school calendar at our next meeting. I, I recognize too, there's a discussion item as it pertains to a full-year option. I would like the administration to provide a documented virtual learning plan so that we have something very formal that speaks to how this will work. I would encourage the administration to also look at how our neighbors are proceeding. I've, I've heard from teachers both in Chesterfield and in Henrico, and it sounds like they've got some real robust options in place. And so again, the more that we're able to collaborate and do this together, I think, would serve the region at large. I also would like to see a, a, a clear overview of where we are from a technology standpoint, both from our students and from our staff to ensure that, that we all have access to the resources that we need at this time. And also with a plan on, you know, if there are technology issues that, that anyone is having, what is the, the protocol in having any of those issues addressed? The, we should receive a full facilities plan. You know, we need to have a clear understanding of, you know, certainly the bathroom blitz and where we're at in terms of having working facilities, but then also really even down to the furniture. If we have some classrooms that have desks where many students sit together, this is something that we need to have a clear understanding of potentially before we return to school. I'm hoping that at our next meeting then, we'll be looking to formally adopt the, the approach for the COVID funds. I think that we should have a clear plan in place for professional development. And I want to hear from our legal counsel on what are all of the policies that we should be reviewing again now? Because that policy changes are something that takes, you know, several meetings. And I want to make sure that any policies, including attendance or otherwise, we have all those things addressed sooner rather than later. And then finally, I'd like to ask the administration to consider as it pertains to our, our, our high-risk students, we've talked about English language learners, we've talked about students with an IEP that we consider a homebound approach with some one-on-one for any families that are open to homebound and likewise, and staff that are open to that. I'm not suggesting that that's something that we start out of the gate because there would have to be protocols in place for that too. But that is something that we can look at and consider as we're moving forward in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Dr. Supini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I definitely would like to, I'm incredibly thankful for all the feedback and thoughtful insight provided. This is a challenging time, but we're in this together and together we'll get through this. I am in support of Plan E. And that being said, I'm, I'm thankful that there will be accountability for students, but also we need a great level of accountability on all sides because there's so much at stake at this point, that the accountability piece will speak volumes as many of our ESL and special ed students will need additional support no matter what. This is, this discussion, I'm thankful for that because this opens up the idea of year-round schooling, which I am all for that. And right now, I think that our students are in need of that and will certainly benefit from that as well. I do agree with Ms. Gibson as well pertaining to the technology piece. Now, I know that still, at this point, there are some students that still do not have devices and that, you know, some of those devices that some may have, may not be operating properly. So we do need some additional support. I would have wished that we were able to have a checkoff list for every student to make sure that each and every student in RPS has a device, has an option, has an opportunity as well as many of our teachers who are also in need of technology assistance. This, this virus knows no bound and particularly in the black and brown community. And so safety come first. And so I do support Plan E. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Supini. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too would like to ditto what my colleagues have already stated as well. Number one, I am elated that the superintendent, Superintendent Kamras has suggested Plan E. I, at this point, being an educator and questions that I brought at our last meeting as well. There's so much to be done and I don't think that we're quite ready to open physically. Yes, we had a great presentation from our specialists, our scientists, our doctors. However, things have changed over the weekend as well regarding the numbers. Kaiser just did a study and it was stated in that that one out of four teachers, faculty and or staff persons, if we opened whether it's two days a week, five days a week, to one day a week, one out of four expectancy will get sick, maybe die. So we're thinking in terms of the children's safety as well as the adults, all adults that are involved with our children. I, I'm looking forward to, I love the layout of what I've seen thus far regarding the camp. My main concern is as we move forward on our vote, and I do support Plan E wholeheartedly, that we think in terms of the student piece instructionally as well as the, the teachers. I'm glad that we had a professional development one day this week with over 400 and some more teacher participants, that's excellent. But we need 100% participation. As one person stated in, in their letter, and it was great to hear from the parents, students, community members, the feedback was excellent. And I think we have a good, healthy list there as we move forward in implementing Plan E. One person added that ask, and I also received a couple of emails from teachers stating with the option of, of, if we do go with Plan E, would there still be an option in place that teachers can be in the schools, in their classrooms for the live discussion? And that would be an option. They still could, could continue to work at home. But if some teachers wanted to come in, which will only be the teachers in the building, the crew chief and the administration. So there should be enough ample space where everybody can move around. The reason this particular teacher, and I just heard in the letter as well, stated that number one, the materials will be there. that number one, the materials will be there at the school that you may not have in your home. Number two, if there's a technology problem, now, ten, you can get it solved by the principal or fellow teacher in the school. Number three, some person, some teachers, live in areas where is the technology, the internet goes off and on, off and on. And as someone else stated, we want that consistency. So as we move forward, and I do hope that we do approve of Plan E, and I think it gives us a chance, I'm glad we're voting tonight, because our parents and our teachers, everyone needs to know what's before us. I want us to revisit, Madam Chair, when Ms. Gibson made her motion, she didn't state, she stated that we would visit this month to month. Having Ms. Page stated in the motion, the motion that she was suggesting, suggested to amend, was to add that we would return in January. So the difference there is month to month versus January, whether it's second semester or what. So I asked that we revisit that discussion regarding what Mrs. Page stated, because the original motion that was made by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Mr. Barlow didn't state a date, whereas Mrs. Page suggested January. So, I'd like to hear the motion again, read please, Madam Chair, because I'm hearing two different pieces here.
Ms. Wilson?
The motion did not initially have January, but when Ms. Page stated an amendment and Ms. Gibson said she wanted that, I added it. So what I have for the motion now, and you all can correct me, is to adopt Plan E with a full report to be given to the board at each upcoming board meeting to speak to the progress, the plan of advancing toward virtual, and to reevaluate opening in January.
Just one note of clarification, Plan E as it's written indicates full virtual for the first semester. So, if the board wanted a change to that, it would be important to articulate that.
Well, I will say this, if we start talking about it in January, we will be voting in January or making a decision in January, that's a little late.
We will, we will, per the motion and per good practice, provide monthly updates on where things stand, and we would enter into those conversations well in advance of January. And it could go either way. It could be that the data improves dramatically, that we would be in a position to come back earlier. It could also be such that the data has not improved come January, and the virtual needs to be extended. Either way, we will continue to present on the data, continue to have Dr. Avula come back, and ensure that we are at least two steps, if not three steps ahead in our planning and our notification to families and staff.
Okay. Then if it's-
I'm sorry, and I know I'm out of order, Madam Chair. I do want some clarification. With this motion, did we say monthly updates, or did we say updates during every board meeting?
Every board meeting.
Okay, all right, so, okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, so Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
And I'm gonna ask Ms. Page and Ms. Gibson to nod or shake your head. So really, what we just need is the motion to say we want to adopt Option E, because it already contains the first semester. Does that work for everybody? Paige?
Yes, and just for clarity purpose, when I said, I know it's included in the presentation, but I was just saying, we evaluate to move forward with a first semester, January opening. I just want clarity purpose.
Okay, so that, but that is included in Option E, so we're good.
Just want to make sure it's clear.
Okay.
Another point of clarification, I'm sorry, Ms. Madam Chair. Okay, so the first semester, does the first semester, the second semester, I'm sorry, does that technically begin in January, or does it begin in February?
I would have to check the calendar for the exact date, but I will do that. If you give me a second, I'm gonna pull it up.
Okay, while you're doing that, Ms. Dorr, I think you were next.
So I'm a little confused on the January and when we're monitoring schedule, but I'm gonna let it go, because it seems like we're gonna get an update at every board meeting in which we're evaluating our plan. And I do think that we need to have flexibility in all sorts of reopening scenarios. So I'm in support of virtual right now, but I think even if we decide to reopen in January, we might consider a phased approach where we have one day a week, two days a week. We phase in kindergarten first, et cetera. So I just, I personally would like to see us be as flexible as possible, so that we're monitoring in real time. And I would like, for as part of those updates, to have a kind of a standard process where we're monitoring community transmission rates, and discussing kind of what that means, you know, every school board meeting, so that we can understand kind of where we are in the phase of the disease. Some good ideas that I've seen are Montgomery County is phasing in different grades, so they're phasing in kindergartners for two weeks, and then they're phasing in a different grade, in a different grade. In New South Wales, they started by phasing in one day a week, so not talking about phasing in right now, I'm in support of virtual. But I just think there are lots of different ways that we can plan for reopening as things recover. I agree, one of the reasons why, the reason why I asked to amend the agenda for a discussion on calendaring is because I think this presents an opportunity for us to really think critically about advocating for more funds for year-round calendar. I know that that's gonna, we've talked about it before, as Ms. Cosby said, I think now is really the time to push for that, and to potentially bring in our state delegation as part of that conversation. So, I'm looking forward to talking a little bit more about it. It was, you know, mostly just an agenda item, just to make sure that we, you know, so in support of making sure that that's part of our ongoing planning. Two other minor things, in talking with teachers and constituents today about, you know, sort of where I stood, which is supportive of Option E, there were a lot of wonderful ideas about how to support families and teachers, and lots of creative thinking about learning pods and outdoor opportunities and use of community centers, et cetera. So, I'd love for a mechanism to capture some of that feedback. I know these times are really challenging for a lot of us, but I do think in times of challenge, there can be great opportunity for innovation and leveraging the spirit and the positivity of our community. And then, finally, this is a minor thing, but I have seen some, a number of people talk about considering opting out to homeschool rather than to do virtual. And I am completely respective of anyone's choice to do that, but it does make me a little bit nervous about our average daily membership and potential loss of funding. And so, wondering if we could just think through that a little bit, and how do we, how do we set ourselves up for success on the funding side?
All right, thank you, Ms. Dorr. And Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to the administration for all of your work putting these plans together. And I'm really thankful, most of all, for the incredible thoughtful and copious feedback that we receive from members of the community, in particular, our teacher advocates, who have gone above and beyond their call of duty yet again, to watch out for the best interests of our students. And, you know, I agree with Ms. Gibson to a large degree related to the difficulty of this decision. It is, you know, most important, first and foremost, to watch out for the, for the safety of our children. But we still do have a very challenging reality here, you know, between providing the much-needed in-person services and instruction to our students, and protecting the safety of our kids, and our teachers. And what really kills me in particular is that we know that our kids and our families who will be most negatively impacted by the closing of our schools, or the virtual opening as opposed to the in-person opening, are also the students and families who, in many cases, are at the greatest risk for infection. So COVID has really flipped the script here, but I do think that this is one of the most consequential decisions any of us will ever make. And I'm really thankful to hear so much support from the board here at this point for Option E, because there are a number of harsh realities here. This virus is out of control. I know that there's a sense, maybe some sense of safety, because we've seen lower numbers of increases in the area, but we've also started to expand into different phases that I fear are going to result in increases in the virus. Virus currencies, it's abundantly clear that the Black and Latinx communities are suffering at a much higher rate of infection than others in our community. It's also clear that staying at home will negatively impact the social, emotional, and educational development of our kids. But, so I think this will take some recovery. We are going to have to continue discussions about how we support our teachers and support our students and support our families through this process. So I'm glad to hear some initial discussion and dialogue about how we go about doing that in the virtual context, and how we go about discussing, discussing how to open or to discuss the possibility of opening in the future. But there are also, you know, just too many unknowns for me to support an in-person option. There aren't comparable case studies for us to compare to. We really don't have a fully developed understanding of the impact that this virus has on our children or adults in the long term. We don't know when a vaccine may be available. So, you know, so my decision really boils down to the fact that I think we can always work to improve the educational achievement of our students, we can certainly work with families and our kids to help address their social and emotional needs, but we cannot guarantee that we won't have an outbreak in our schools, and we cannot guarantee that we can stop asymptomatic spread or symptomatic spread. And we cannot reverse the impacts of a student or teacher being infected, or of a student or teacher being placed on a ventilator. So, I just don't think it's worth the significant risks to our community at this point. And I do hope that we see others on a state level and the local level and other localities and other school divisions take this very seriously as well. And I do think it's a community effort, and it's not our school division making this decision alone that's gonna help us get through this virus. So, thanks again to my colleagues, and thanks again to everyone who's provided feedback, and I look forward to voting for Option E.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Ms. Page, then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just really want to share some of the same sentiment as my colleagues have stated. But also, I just want to thank the school community for giving us so much feedback, the calls that we have received, and thank you for, thank you to the superintendent and the administration for providing, submitting the recommendation, Option E, which I fully, fully support. No one could, no one could have ever imagined that we would have been dealing with a pandemic of such magnitude, and, but Option E is the only thing that makes sense, because first and foremost, is making sure that our children, staff, and our families are safe. We all want our children back in school, but we want them to be safe. And we want our faculty and our staff, and, you know, families to be safe as well. But I'm optimistic about this virtual platform, because, you know, we keep talking about equity. But creating, creating a rigorous learning environment in the virtual format, it creates the same platform, you know, the same rigorous learning environment for all of our students, regardless. So I'm very optimistic about the virtual platform. And accountability, I want to speak to that. And my colleague Sapini spoke on it, accountability, accountability for all, not just our students, but accountability for everyone that's providing, you know, the learning opportunity, the learning experiences for our children. So, we must enforce accountability, because this is gonna be a challenging time, but this is all hands on deck. And so again, I fully support Option E, because the last thing we want to say is that we sorry. But this is gonna give us opportunities to move forward, to be innovative, and be bigger and better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the administration for your thoughtful considerations, and echoing all of my colleagues. A big, big thank you to our community for all of the feedback and thoughtfulness as well. I too fully support Plan E, or Option E. You know, and for me, and you all have heard me say this before, I was, I am extremely concerned about the COVID slide, but more importantly, I'm extremely concerned about life, and wanting to preserve lives at all costs. And so if we are on the side of caution, so be it. And I do want to say, I'm not gonna reiterate everything that all of my colleagues have said, but I do ask one thing, I would, but Dr. Sapini did mention this, as well as Ms. Dorr. Yes, we are in this together as a community, and I do hope that the administration will, as we move forward with our virtual plans, really engage the community again. We have heard a lot of great ideas on how we make sure that every student is connected. That's my biggest fear with Plan E, that I, you know, we, we know during the spring we lost students, we were not connected. And so we want to make sure that we engage every student. And we did a phenomenal community outreach and partnership when we were serving, as we served meals to our communities, to our students. And if we can do that in the same spirit to make sure that we're connecting to all of our students, I think is critical. And I will just reserve the rest of my comments about year-round schooling for that point in the discussion. But thank you again to the entire community for all of your, your feedback and your emails and your calls.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. Ms. Page, did you need to come back in here again now?
No, Madam Chair. I just didn't see my name, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. All right, then Ms. Burke, and then Dr. Sapini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want us to be mindful, as my colleagues have already stated, and when the superintendent does bring back a plan for us to visit, years ago, I know with the SOLs, I don't know whether it's still included or not, Dr. Epps can let us know this later, we, it was, it was expected, I believe it was the third through fifth grade, well, yeah, that's the SOL test and how it begins, study skills. Just as a couple of schools, and I don't want to call out names- Just as a couple of schools, and I don't want to call out names, when the students received Chromebooks, a lot of students didn't know how to get in, what to do. And I know some principals did spearhead that and had some workshops with their students virtually in terms of addressing that. So what I'm asking is, when the, when we receive the plan from the administration, to please also include the daily schedule. But also include study skills in terms of, all right, nine to 10 or nine to 10 until 10:30, I'll have reading. What do I need to have set up before my teacher explains the lesson virtually? What should be in place? Because my greatest concern is, is already mentioned, and I think this is one of the many reasons, we don't want our children to fall behind. A lot of them already have. They haven't missed a whole year because we went to school until mid-March. But we have not missed the entire year. The curve for learning, the learning curve does change during the summer. So we will begin, when we begin, which we haven't discussed that yet, in terms of the opening date for virtual, would it be the first day of school? I know the motion, of which we have not voted on yet, stated, listed January to return, but we did not state to start on the day after Labor Day or what. So that, that motion has not been made. So I ask number one, that with the accountability piece, the students, I want to know how our students, how we know they have mastered what has been taught? Would it be a checklist? Would it be a virtual exam? Will it be conversation? Will it be anecdotal records? Because we have lost a lot of our students because of those not having the structure in place to be on the computer every day. And my other comment is, and I really want us to think about this as a board. Please, there are systems watching us. You know, oftentimes we think the grass is greener on the other side. And I can call out some systems. Administrators that I've spoken to from one end of the level to the other. People are also watching rich and public schools. And through this entire COVID piece, we led the way. Other schools may have had Chromebooks laptops, but they didn't all have hotspots. People in Fairfax County, I didn't say I wasn't calling in words, excuse me. Systems and other school systems otherwise are utilizing what we have on our playlists from day to day and like better. As one of the parents stated, I cannot remember, remember which school has stated that even which plan for us to vote on this evening, this is one of the most well-written she'd seen and she writes for a living. So I want us to think that even though this one may be doing the phase on Monday, Tuesday, or kindergarten in the morning and somebody else in the afternoon, that we also hold up what we're doing. I don't stand on the bottom of anything. You can't stand tall if you're waiting for others to always bring to you. So why can't we have that robust plan? As someone else stated, there is no perfect plan. But if there is complete buy-in and trust, any plan will work. So I just want us to be mindful of that. That we stand on the side of what's better for each and every child. Latino, black, Asian, white, it doesn't matter. But I want us to be mindful that as we're putting energy on seeing what this one's doing, that one's doing. I hope, Mr. Camus, you've gotten phone calls from others. I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Dr. Sappini?
Yes, very quickly, I just wanted to add that as COVID testing increases, it would be great for everyone to be able to get tested, all students, staff, parents, this as a baseline in preparation for transition from Plan E in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sappini. I don't see any other people waiting to speak. I will just say, I appreciate this very robust discussion and all the hard work that everybody has been putting in. Every single one of these people on the school board have worked so hard. Responding, listening, investigating, researching, pondering and losing sleep. I know I have and I know I'm not alone. I do think we need to do the virtual option. I am like Ms. Cosby, very concerned about some of our students having the help they need to succeed in a virtual environment. But I have faith that our administrative team will be working hard on that. And we have a lot of employees. They won't all be doing face-to-face virtual. And there'll be a lot of roles that we will be asking them to do. And I look forward to hearing from our administration every time we have a meeting about how this is rolling out, how we're planning. But I'm just thankful, I'm thankful for the community's input. I'm thankful for the administration stepping up. And everybody on your mark. Yeah, you know the rest. So Ms. Wilson, let's go ahead and have our vote, please.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have the motion to adopt Plan E with a full report to be given to the board at each upcoming meeting to speak to the progress of the plan of advancing toward virtual. And we took out the January piece because that's part of the plan, correct?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Gibson?
So the, the check-ins are to talk about status on eventually being able to reopen?
Okay, so you are.
She not advancing toward virtual, but.
I mean, yes, I mean, so leading up to the start of the school year, do we need updates on virtual? Absolutely. But I would like also ongoing updates so that we can talk about status for an eventual reopening of plan.
I like status.
Yeah.
Updates on status. How does that work? That work?
Yes.
Okay.
So to speak to the progress, you want to take out the advancing toward virtual and just put update on status?
Yeah. Right, Ms. Gibson?
I think so, yes.
Read the whole thing again, Ms. Wilson.
To adopt Plan E with a full report to be given to the board at each upcoming board meeting to speak to the update on the status.
For reopening, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Page.
I think it needs to include not just reopening, but just the status of how the virtual is being rolled out and the issues that we may be dealing with. So the status of the virtual platform as well.
How about? How about the status of our virtual education as we move toward reopening?
Perfect.
That work, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, but I, I still want to know, we need a plan for eventually reopening schools in person, so.
Okay. But as we move toward reopening. Okay. Try it again, Ms. Wilson.
Okay. To adopt Plan E with a full report to be given to the board at each upcoming meeting to speak to the update on the status of the virtual platform as RPS moves toward reopening.
Ms. Burke?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So we have revised the motion then. We've amended the motion.
Well, I think we just clarified the wording.
No, because we just added, you took out January to be considered, to consider opening in January.
That's because it was included in Plan E.
Okay, all right. Another question regarding Plan E. Did we state when school would open? Is that date in, in Plan E's report?
Plan E calls for full virtual through the first semester. The second semester begins on February 8th.
All right, what I'm asking is, so we're going to begin school for students on September the?
Eight. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And for clarification, we're talking about going back in February as opposed to January?
According to.
That would be towards the.
According to Plan E, we would be fully virtual for the first semester. And absent any other action by the board, we would be back in person on February 8th for the second semester. But of course, as we've discussed, we will update the board every meeting. And as we get closer to that timeline, if the board wants to go in a different direction, either opening up sooner or staying virtual longer, we can certainly do so based on the board's decision.
Yes. Okay. All right. Let's, let's have our vote.
Okay, Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Dr. Sappini?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one.
All right, now we move to the discussion of the school calendar, including year-round school. And since Ms. Dorr, this was your, I'll let you start.
I am in support of directing the administration to come to us with a some options about our school calendar and what it would take to move to full years, year-round school, understanding some of the things that Ms. Page articulated earlier in regards to what the cost would be, what the timeline might be, how it might benefit our students. And the reason why I think it's pertinent to bring up tonight is that because we're making the decision to go virtual, probably for the, you know, through the, through the end of the year, you know, maybe things will change, but right now, as it, as we've discussed through the end of the year, I think, you know, we're going to have the COVID slide, which means that kids are going to be out of in-person school for nearly, you know, a little less than a year. And so it's a great opportunity for us to think about how do we catch up? And one way to do that is through year-round school, which has many benefits outside of our current situation. So I wanted to see, check in with my colleagues and see if they would agree with that and any other considerations that we might think. And it was just brought to my attention, a small point which I hadn't thought of, as I'm sure there will be many nuances around this, that many teachers over the summer get a second job. And so if we move to a year-round calendar, there would need to be some considerations about teacher salaries, et cetera, as one item that we would need to discuss at future meetings.
Mr. Young and then Ms. Page and then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to address this most important subject and appreciative to my colleague Liz for introducing it. Candidly, I don't I don't think that, I don't think because of what was approved this evening, we will, we will have an option. I think it is now mission critical that, that we adopt a year-round calendar for, for the reasons that Ms. Dorr spoke to and, and so many more. So I do welcome an opportunity to initiate planning as expeditiously as possible for that. It, candidly, summer 2021 will be here before we, we know it and we're if, if we are as a school district committed to all the principles that I know that we are, including so many that have been addressed this evening, particularly equity. We are going to have, in my opinion, we're going to have to adopt a year-round school calendar that would incorporate summer 2021. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Ms. Page, then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to reiterate some same comments that my colleague Ms. Dorr made and I fully support that in, you know, directing the administration to provide the board that information and what would it look like? Thank you.
Thank you.
Year-round school, what, what would it look like?
Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to Ms. Dorr for the motion. I echo what my colleagues have said, specifically, Mr. Young. I know that we have been promoting and advocating for a year-round option for several months now. I'm glad that it is, that it will be a consideration. And I just want to say before, when we had this discussion, there, we really talked about a year-round calendar option in terms of the additional cost. We were looking at perhaps additional days or even extended hours. But I do want to reiterate yet again, even to look at something very similar, a year-round option that our, that Patrick Henry has. So something that might not present any barriers when it comes to additional costs too. So I hope that is one of the scenarios that is, that will be presented to us.
Okay, I'm going to stop right here for a second. Ms. Dorr, did you actually make a motion?
I did not. I don't, I don't know if it requires a motion. I'm happy to make one if the.
I don't know either.
My.
I like, make a motion.
I motion that the administration comes to the board with a, several proposals for year-round calendaring.
I, I'm more than happy to do so and.
That was Ms. Cosby that seconded.
That was Paige.
Paige that seconded.
No, it's me, Ms. Cosby.
I think I.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. As long as it was seconded. I don't care. As long as it's a motion, as long as it's seconded and we're finally talking about it.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Onma?
Yes.
I, I do want to, I'm excited to explore this. I, I do want to be sensitive to the team's capacity. Right now, we need to focus 100% on preparing for something we have never done before, which is launching an entire school system virtually. And so if I could have the, the grace of the board to have some time to focus on that, and then I'm more than happy to come back to the board once we've opened up school with some options on the year-round calendar. That I think would enable us to, to do the work well rather than just throwing some things together, as we discussed during the budget season very directly. For additional time, there is an inordinate expense. And I know that's not the only way to do year-round, but I shall have to say, we want to plan thoughtfully and give you really good options and my humble request is that we're able to focus on the, the opening of a fully virtual school right now and come to the board after opening with some discussion around what year-round options might look like.
All right, Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Dorr.
I guess. I, I guess for me, I do have a question about that, you know. If we're talking about, we're saying that we're starting with, of course, we've, we've approved tonight a virtual option. And if the board is saying there is concern about the COVID slide and that we do feel as if this may be one way to mitigate that. So I guess my question is, how come that could not be a part of the whole? If we're starting virtually, the whole package or experience? I don't know.
No, it's.
Because if we're saying that, you know, hey, instead of starting, Ms. Burke asked a very pertinent question that I'm not sure if we, we answered when the semester will end. But I don't know if we necessarily answered, are we starting in September? Is this something as we continue? Are we going to have a complete winter break? You know, these are things that I think have to be considered in this virtual option.
If I may, Ms. Onma?
Yes.
So absent any other action by this body, we're starting school on September 8th. And I would strongly advocate us not starting any sooner than that, given the enormity of the work before us. We are, by the board's. We are, by the board's action now, going to be fully virtual through the first semester. And we may be in person for the second semester. We may be virtual for the second semester, depending upon where the, the virus stands. And so, the most concrete impact of a year-round schedule really wouldn't be felt until next summer, when we might, um, extend the year, where we might finish the, the twenty twenty-one year and then start the new year in July. We might start it in August, and it might look very different in terms of its length. I, I'll say though, I'll just say, I do think we have a little bit of time, A. B, so much of how we would potentially construct a year-round schedule is going to be tied to where we are with the virus. And, you know, whether we would be in person or not, and, and so on and so forth. Um, and so, uh, uh, again, I, I think both because we do have a little bit of time and because I think we need to know more where the virus is going, and because, um, we have a daunting task in front of us, um, in terms of the virtual opening. I, I'm just requesting, uh, that we're able to come back to the board in the September timeframe, uh, with some initial thinking as opposed to the, essentially August timeframe, since we're just about there in August.
Okay, um, Ms. Dorr, then Ms. Burke, then Mr. Young, then Ms. Page.
Just wanted to comment. Thanks for setting expectations on, um, workload and certainly appreciate this is gonna be a massive undertaking for you all. I do think, Ms. Cos- to Ms. Cosby's point, having it in the back of our mind that there might be calendar changes is probably what I would ask is that, I don't need to necessarily see a full plan, but I think at least understanding that there likely could be calendar changes as part of our school opening plan is, is important. And, um, I think one other thing that I think is slightly more urgent is if we, if there's any opportunity at the state level to lobby for additional funding, COVID support related around extended calendar, um, I would just ask us that we're aware of that as well.
Okay, Ms. Burke, then Mr. Young, then Ms. Page.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you so much again. I'm thinking in terms of opening a school, I, I just want us to think as a board, I'm in full favor always, always, I've always been in favor of year-round schools. I've visited, um, one in North Carolina. I have visited year-round schools. But right now, I want us to be mindful of keeping the main thing, the main thing. And that is the teaching, learning process. To have our administration to put the time and effort at this particular time on a year-round school is overwhelming. It's overwhelming to open a school period mid-August, September. All right, I've done it for over 26 years, opening schools. And no matter how many years of service you have, it's a lot. Then we're still in the mind frame of COVID. So it may be two years down the line before we can have a year-round school. I just don't want us to take the energy away from our children. I know in the end, it's to give them an opportunity to be in the classroom more, to be in the teaching, learning process more. And I so, I wholeheartedly appreciate that. But sometimes we can spread ourselves too thin. And then we have A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And in the end, who gets left out? It'll be our children. So I'm asking right now, I'm in full favor of a year-round school, but I'm not in favor of the administration. We need, we have new curriculums, we have people that also need to be hired. For the first time, we're teaching virtually. We've never done this before. I had one teacher that tell me this morning, Ms. Burke, you know, I can't retire yet, but I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the computer. Who's going to help me? So my thinking is, you're gonna have help in place. I just don't want us right now, for, for the 2021 school year, to put so much ener- energy into a year-round school that our children again end up on the bottom of the list, however, our own assessments of others. I think it's, we need to rethink that. I think it's not fair. You know, it's like giving someone 50, 60 things to do, and everything can't be number one. So right now, I'm begging the board to rethink and reconsider. Ms. Dorr, Ms. Ms. Cosby, Ms. Cosby, you know I'm in full, full favor. I wanted it years ago, I should have asked. Always was told it's about the dollars, about the money, it's about the Benjamins. So, but being realistic, to have this board to put together the administration, we're not fully staffed anywhere. I don't care what the position is. I just see us spreading ourselves too thin. I'm concerned about Johnny that's in the sixth grade that lives in my district and opens his Chromebook every day, and he opens it and plays, was it Fortnite? Whatever it is, some kind of video game. And he gets the attitude when I ask him, well, show me what you're learning. Show me what you're learning. You know, my mother knows I'm, well, I, I get a little back talk, and that's okay. Then when I sat down with he and his brother, and these children are not in my district, okay, they're south of the James, hint, hint. When I sat down with them and showed them, they were surprised to see even physical Ed on the listing. So that's, that's where I want our energy to go to. Those students that's gonna make As and Bs, those students that could be making As and Bs, but are making Bs and Fs because they need the push from us. They need the personal touch. They need the relationship piece. I am not, uh, when it's time to vote, if the vote takes place this evening, since it's a motion, we have not set any timeframe. And it's not, it's not even legitimate from my experiences, even expect that to happen in September and October. We don't know what the state is gonna say about SOLs. I just stated, I want us to lead the way. But if we keep spreading ourselves thin, we can keep doing what we've always done. So again, I'm in favor of year-round schools, but I'm not in favor of that energy at this time being placed until we get the virtual product down pat. Mr., um, Dr. Sapini stated, every child doesn't even have a computer. Those are the type things. I did have a principal that tell me today, though, whoever's putting the grades in is doing a phenomenal job. But it's a lot. So I'm pleading with the board, Ms. Dorr, Ms. Cosby, um, to rethink in terms of when to put this, if there even is a point of a new calendar. Let's, 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 let's focus in on student achievement at this time. Let's focus in on our dreams for RIPS at this time and master that. And then, as I stated, I'm in favor, but I don't want any of that information. We don't know what's gonna happen. So I am not in favor at this particular time of our having discussion at length on year-round schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Mr. Young, Ms. Page, Ms. Cosby, Ms. Gibson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll be brief. I-
Thank you.
I'm okay. I think Sep- I think September, uh, I would welcome a, um, initial, uh, report. I don't expect, uh, by the, um, September the eighth to, uh, to, to have a detailed report that would identify all the, all the different scenarios or elements of a, of different options relevant to, uh, year-round school calendar. But I do think that we need to begin in earnest as soon as, as soon as now, and, uh, would welcome a, uh, an initial, uh, report from the administration in September, Superintendent hinted at. Candidly, uh, I recognize that summer next year feels like forever from now, but, um, but the truth is, we're gonna turn our head and the next thing we're gonna know, uh, it's, uh, it's gonna be the fall and then the winter. And, uh, and, and to Ms. Burke's point and, uh, and everyone will concur, I'm sure, it's, uh, it will, if we adopt, and I, I hope that we will, a year-round calendar for all the reasons that we've already spoken to, it's going to require so very much investment of resources as relates to time and, and, uh, stakeholder meetings, um, that, um, I would hope that we could initiate some of that work as, as soon as, as this falls. So, uh, that'd be my two cents. I just concur with what Felicia spoke to, um, a moment ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Page, then Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Gibson.
Yes, thank you. Um, I wanna thank my colleagues, their comments, um, Ms. Burke, Ms. Cosby, Ms. Dorr. And thank the superintendent for, for providing us feedback. I support year-round schools and, you know, the, cause we've discussed this before, when I was on the board, there are opportunities. But right now may not be the right time. And as Ms. Burke said, we gotta keep the main thing, the main thing. Student achievement and making sure that we master the virtual platform for our students and making sure that our teachers are prepared to provide a positive conducive learning environment. So, and if we don't get that right, we fail and our children fail. And you know what? That's not an option for me. Our children will not fail, fail. So now may not be the right time, but it's something, you know, we can put a placeholder. And we visit at the appropriate time, but we need to make sure that we master this full option of virtual learning. Bec- because again, there are still so many unknowns about COVID. And we're not even sure if February, if that's gonna be an ideal time to reopen schools face-to-face. So, that's my take on that at this current time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page, Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you to all of my colleagues for your feedback. Um, and I just wanna reiterate something. Trust me. When I mention year-round schools or change in the calendar, I am keeping the main thing, the main thing. The bottom line is that we have students who we've said it before in this conversation who have been, um, impacted, significantly impacted by COVID. We have students who have not received a Chromebook, much less opened it and played a video game. So, we have not had students who, as you mentioned, Ms. Burke, who have not, been engaged in academic instruction. And so for those students, frankly, we need to make sure that we have additional time to connect, to engage, and to get them where they need to be. So if that means a consideration of a change in the calendar, we need to consider it now. To make sure that we are being effective and that our systems are holistic, that is something that we have to consider now and not later. Now, am I saying, okay, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Cameras, to manage expectations, not a full-blown plan, but that is something that we must consider. If we're in person or if we are virtual, do we say, hey, during the summer months, because we know what we have experienced, we know our kids have been out of school since March? We know we already had an achievement gap, and we know that achievement gap has increased, not decreased. So, what are some of the creative things we can do, and this is not even creative, it's just an option, that we can do to help mitigate as we go through virtual learning? I said it last week, when I mean, I'm not a virtual learner. I suck at it. I'm not good. I need that in person. And so if I'm doing a platform that I'm not used to, perhaps I might need some additional time. And I think those are some considerations that we must talk about now and not do something that is piecemeal. That has been some of our problems. We piecemeal this, piecemeal that. The reason why I said, yes, Ms. Dorr, do a motion, is because we have to talk about it, and this is to force a conversation. Because we all know that we've had conversations, thrown things out there, and we still talking about it two and three and four months later. And that is not an option because we don't have the time. We talk about student achievement, we are in critical, this is a critical, we, this is a crisis point. And education's a crisis point in terms of people's lives, it's a crisis point in terms of education, it's a crisis point in terms of our achievement gap. So yes, as we're talking about these virtual options, we've already said, and there's already been a Wall Street Journal article out, out there saying it's not necessarily the best option, but it's the most, it's the safest option for us right now. So how do we make sure that we push achievement as much as possible? And that has got to be a conversation. Do we extend the calendar? Do we change the calendar? So instead of the summer slide on top of COVID slide, we can decrease something. It has to be a consideration, has to be a discussion now too. So we can have a very holistic approach, and so people know what we're going to do, so we can start to plan collectively. So, whether the motion stands or not, that has to be a conversation. And we want to have a holistic discussion about what we're doing, but whether it's virtual or we in person. The calendar is important.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby, Ms. Gibson, and then Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, I, admittedly, I, I have some frustration because I, I feel that we use the, the, the kind of talking point of we need to focus on the main thing, and that was exactly my concern when we were talking about, you know, adopting a new curriculum. Everyone seems to have different perspective on what that main thing is that we should be focusing on right now. My suggestion is, you know, uh, at a, as a first step, this is a thing with incredible budget implications, and so, so, you know, my question is, we are going to be adopting the, um, the, the use of those federal funds and, you know, I, I think that it would, uh, make some sense to, at least in, in that conversation, to have, uh, some placeholder numbers, um, to be able to include in, in that discussion. And, uh, we, we definitely should be looking at our calendar irregardless of the, um, full year. That's a recommendation from the V S B A. And so, um, you know, I would, uh, ask the administration to come to us and let us know if there are any adjustments that we should make. You know, there was some question about the start of the school year. You know, if there is any impact on how we would wanna look at professional development or, or any other days. You know, there are some half-days in the calendar, I believe. How does that, you know, does that still make sense now? So, so I do think that, that we should review our calendar in light of the fact that we'll be virtual. And, uh, and, and definitely from a budget standpoint, you know, can we get at least, you know, some scenario in that sense so that, um, we would know how much we wanna advocate for, if it's something we wanna go to the state for, or, you know, if there's, there's, there's some other choices to be made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. Young?
Again, briefly, Madam Chair. First, I, uh, I'll be really brief and just say yes to everything that Felicia Cosby said. That was, uh, spot on. And then I also wanna concur, uh, with, uh, what Kenny Gibson just spoke to. I, I do think that, uh, we absolutely have to begin with the, with the budget and, uh, you know, candidly, we, uh, we took a bite at this apple a month or a couple of months ago. I guess a month ago when we were, uh, discussing, among other things, the $13 million. It amounted to now closer to 12 million, but the point is the federal funds. And, um, you know, we had a debate then and, uh, we, as a board, uh, chose to allocate resources to some other priorities that candidly, uh, I would encourage us, uh, to revisit. Uh, I do think that we're gonna have to, uh, allocate real resources, not just money, um, but to, uh, a very different kind of school calendar. And, uh, like Felicia said, I mean, I think that this pertains to, yes, the summer, but I, I wouldn't want to limit the conversation to, uh, just the, the summer. I think that, uh, I think that we have to discuss both, both, uh, changing the calendar, um, um to allow for something akin to like what Hopewell is is gonna do. Uh or uh and or, and or to also include additional days, additional time. So anyhow, uh my colleagues already more eloquently than I spoke to all that, so just, just a few thoughts.
Okay, um Ms. Burke has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um going back to what Mr. Young just stated. Um as I stated earlier, I believe in year round schools, I just, I just want us to have not to be spending a lot of time on getting a piece here, a piece there, as Ms. Cosby stated, the piecemeal piece. And I I would like to hear from the board or the administration, I guess, first, being reasonable. Um I like what Mr. Young stated in terms of summer school, which we could do that as extended learning time. But I'm thinking year round to be as the average year round school, similar to what Ms. Cosby stated, Patrick Henry's piece, or I think it's chocolate in Chesterfield, is it chocolate element? It's not chocolate, it's the other one. It was a commerce school, that's a year round school. If we're gonna do a robust year round program, we're gonna do a piecemeal, then go ahead and bring it there. And it's not that I'm second guessing our team. As we put a year round program in place, whether it's virtual or at, or in school, we have to make sure this program flies, and we have less than a month, really. So I'm, I'm, at some point, Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the motion regarding year round school. May I do that at this time?
You. Oh my goodness.
Get away until it's voted on. I'm standing strong on this. I'm standing strong on this. I see my children every day. I see my children every day. Yes, they do need opportunity. Yes, they do need help. It's a lot of them were not getting it during the school year as they could have. So it's a lot we need to do.
What would you like to amend, and we'll see if Ms. Dora will accept the amendment? And Mr. Young, was there a second, I think?
All right, so before I do that, I wanna ask, I need to ask the administration this, because when you put in place a year round school, that costs lots of money. So I don't know whether we're talking about all forty-four, how many schools we have, forty-four, forty-six? How many schools, Mr. Cameras?
Depends on how you count them, but let's go with forty-four.
All right, so I'm thinking, are we thinking about all forty-four schools, all forty-four, or forty-six? Are we thinking about typical schools? So the reason I'm asking that is because I just wanna be clear that I can, I can see having a conversation in November, but not in for September, because we're just getting started. Some children still won't have had Chromebooks, some teachers still would need more PD. Um so I I'd like to amend the motion that we, uh Mr. Cameras had his hand up.
Tell it, Ms. Dora.
That's okay, that's okay. No, no, it's.
Mr. Cameras?
May I offer something, Ms. Burke, and let me know if that fits?
Please do, please do.
Um so I I believe Ms. Dora's motion was that we uh just discuss year round. I don't think it had any timeframe, and I'm good with that. I think that's a great motion.
You didn't think so a few minutes ago.
No. I just wanted to.
Tell by your face.
I just wanted to clarify expectations so as to not disappoint the board.
Yes.
Uh what I was asking, and this doesn't need to be formalized, as long as we can just all generally agree right now, is that we take that up, um once we have opened school, it could be part of our normal uh calendar discussion process, which we aim to conclude by December uh as part therefore of our budget process so that we would be prepared come next summer to know if we were in person, you know, or virtual during June, July, August, whatever the case may be. All that I was requesting is just let us focus on opening school virtually right now. Then come September, we'll kick off the calendar conversation, and year round school will be a central part of that. If we're generally good with that, I'm fine with the motion.
All right, Ms. Wilson, would you read the motion, please?
That the administration come to the board with several options for the board to consider regarding a year round calendar.
Okay, so let's vote on that. Ms. Burke, it just, it's open ended as it is, okay? Okay.
All right, um Ms. Dora?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
No.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Motion passes six-three.
Thank you. And now we move on, let me see if I can find my agenda. We move on to um the, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, appoint the chief of staff to act and sign in the superintendent's absence. I need a motion.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Page, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Dora seconds, okay, is there discussion? Seeing none, let us have the vote.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Ms. Dora?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, now we go to three point oh four to receive for action the budget transfers.
And I can just really quickly explain this transfer. As you know, we have a line called the Flex Line, uh Foreign Language in Elementary Schools, which is for part-time um Spanish instruction. Uh this just takes those dollars and turns that part-time money into a full-time position for a shared Spanish teacher between Fisher and Westover Hills. So the same work, but just as one person, as a full-time employee.
Okay, um is there a motion? To approve this budget transfer?
The move.
Second.
All right, so Mr. Young moved it, and Mr. Barlow seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let us have the vote.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, all right. Uh is there any new business from the board? I'm looking over here in my chat. I do not see any. All right, does anyone have any announcements? No? Well, you sure? We're gonna, we're gonna make it just before ten o'clock. I hereby adjourn this meeting.
Good night.
Night.